Well done, Andy.
Thank you.
Yes, along in Mary.
All right, excellent.
All right. Everyone's falling back to you.
Can I what? Yeah. The audio is on. You should mute all your audio on there. Nothing should be on the range. You don't need to speak through it.
So nothing's coming in or coming out or else.
Everyone, can everyone turn their microphones on? Just make sure. Give me a good tap. All at the same time.
Does any, can like anybody hear mine?
Okay.
Nice and close to your mic.
Right into the microphone, buddy.
Yep.
We're gonna get you like a wraparound.
One more person than that.
Good evening, everyone. I'm gonna call this meeting in order of Troy Planning Commission. First order of business is to approve the minutes of the October motion. You approve the minutes from October?
My second.
Minutes from the October 20th meeting are approved. Consent agenda this evening. And for anybody who's not familiar with our procedure. I know we already have consent agenda. Those would be PLPC 202157. That's 3367 Sixth Avenue, 202161 44th Street. So those three items we have already had public consent in prior to the meeting. We are gonna move those on to the new business agenda. Any other items on the agenda that the members of the public would like to comment on tonight? 57 was one of the ones that's already moved to new business. Are there any other items in those three?
Hello?
That's correct. That item is gonna be moved to the new business part of the agenda. So when we vote on the consent agenda. No, the move to the new business agenda. So we're gonna. We are gonna take a vote on all the items on the consent agenda except for those three that I named. Those three will be moved to the new business part of the agenda. So people will have an opportunity to comment on them publicly after the consent agenda. So there will be public comment on those three items tonight.
So, so what we're doing to move things along for everybody is there's certain things on the agenda that no one here to talk about, no one cares about. They're easy, they're non-controversial. We're passing those as a group to get them out of the way. So we can focus on the ones that you're all here to talk about. So we are trying to move it along. That's why we're doing this.
So except for those three that I named, there are still three other items on the consent agenda. If anybody has any public comment on those other three items, please speak up now. Otherwise.
I do have one.
Oh.
And it's not an objection, but just on the 2021 00620. I know it. 2021 0063 5862 King Street. I'm on the second page.
There's one more on it, yeah.
And not, it's not, I'm not against it, just through some comments.
Sure. Do you wanna move it over or should we just take the comments now?
No, move it over.
Okay, so that will move, well, move over 5862 King Street. That's PLPC 202163. That's the final item on the consent agenda is also being moved to new business. Unless there's any other comment, public or from the commissioners regarding the other three items on the consent agenda, I think we'll move that those to a vote. All right. Okay.
I move that we take a vote on number 59, 60, and 62 on the consent agenda.
I do have one question on item 62. I believe when I looked through that, I didn't see any plans nor or anything really in the application.
So it's just a change of use application. So they don't actually need to submit a citation. Okay. Okay. Yeah, that's the reason. Okay. All right.
I'm, I'll second it.
Moving to a vote. Barbara Hibby.
Yes.
Suzanne Spelling.
Yes.
Roddy Yagan.
Yes.
And Anthony Moan, yes. So those three items, PLPC 202159, 60, and 62 all pass. And now we'll move on to the new business portion of the agenda. So starting with PLPC 202157, that's 3367 Sixth Avenue. And we can start by opening this up for public comment. Hi, good evening.
Hello, this is Elizabeth Rodriguez. I was the architect that helped prepare the application. I did expect Tom Zed to be here, but perhaps I could answer some questions if they could.
Great, thank you. So we'll turn to the commissioners now.
I would like to know the definition of smoke shop.
I don't know. Seems like it would be to sell tobacco and smoking accessories.
Can I just ask, in the absence of the owner, should we perhaps do the other ones first? I just think if we don't even know what this is, it's hard to.
Unless the applicant's consultant thinks she can speak to the operations of the proposed facility.
I don't know anything more than that.
I believe it's about tobacco and smoking accessories.
Might make sense to.
Yeah.
Although I would say if you want to open it up to public comment at this point, as long as we keep it brief, if people, you know, are only out here for that, that particular item.
You don't expect the applicant to be here tonight, correct?
I'm not sure. There's a little bit of a language barrier. So I'm not positive.
The only reason I ask is because if he was planning to attend, we could hear one of the other items. If he might be showing up in a little bit.
Yeah, I, I did not speak to him specifically about this. So I, I'm not sure. But I figured since I was here and I helped prepare the plan, if there's anything I can do to help him be heard, I'll assist him in being heard.
Understood. Thank you. In that case, since we do have members of the public who did show up to comment on this project tonight, I think we will open up the public hearing to hear from them.
Can we just go to the next one? So because otherwise we'll have to repeat the comments for.
No, they won't. It's part of the record. They came out here.
Okay. Say it again.
So if any members of the public did come to comment on this application, if you can please indicate, so by raising your hand. Great. All right, so why don't we? Have you come up? Please limit your comments to no more than three minutes. And please state your name and address for the record at the beginning of your comment.
Also, please don't repeat comments that were, you know, previously. You're the first guy, so you're, you're good.
All right, good evening. So I'm Frank Dave, and I've been in here more than 54 years of residence, 259th Street, same address, same number, same hood forever. So I'm the North Central Communities Director. And we've been at this for seven years. First, I just wanna let it be known that it was indicated in the paperwork that this was gonna be a smoke shop. And it was formerly a. That there's something that was happening that before that. There was actually a place there that was called Lisa's House. And they provided stuff for the community, for the children there. And for some reason, that didn't go through. They gave kids an opportunity to have stuff that they wouldn't have elsewhere. So Lisa's House was there. We wanna make that known. All right, so it wasn't formerly a blue smoke. It was Lisa's House that was providing for the children in there clearly. Okay? Now, next thing is really a smoke shop? We just wanna, the North Central, and I'm talking with the pulse of the people there. I can get you 250 signatures if you need. Most people will tell me, totally not, but this is not. You understand what I'm saying to you is no, a smoke shop in that area? Never. Come on. If anybody in the room can tell me how, how a smoke shop is going to enhance or do anything for that community, by all means.
Good evening. My name is Kermit McCauley. I live at 15011th Street, North Troy. And I feel that a smoke shop is not really wanted there. What is wanted and needed in our community is something to help our kids, to help us be better in the future. We need a place where we can have suicide prevention for kids. A place where we can help them do their homework. A place where we can teach them how to fill applications out for jobs in college. And, you know, and I also urge you to help the underprivileged people in our community to be better. I mean, there's underprivileged white people, black kids, Puerto Rican, all that. And all that put together as one will make our community better. And I think it's up to you to make that happen. And I appreciate it if you did. Thank you.
Good evening. First, thank you for your service to our community. I know it's not easy to, you know, to do the jobs that you guys have. My name is Mike Tisak. I've lived at 32nd Avenue, right around the corner from that property for close to 30 years now, since I returned home from military. And, you know, I've seen a lot of businesses go in there and some succeed and some fail. But I've watched our community over the last thirty years kind of rebound, right? And specifically in the last decade. Out of inroads with housing, roads, parks, that kind of thing. The community's on the ups. And I think in those same last 30 years, we've lost more witness to local, state, federal governments literally go to war with the tobacco industry to try to eradicate these bad habits from our, from our society, right? This isn't helping. Dropping a smoke shop in the middle of an impoverished neighborhood that's trying to dig its way out of that is one step forward and two steps back for everybody that's involved in the process. Particularly the neighborhood is predominantly African-American. There are some white Americans like myself, Hispanics, Latinos. You know, we have plenty of stores that sell tobacco in the neighborhoods. They can't advertise on the outside, they can't advertise on the inside. So I think the last thing our neighborhood needs is a flagship for tobacco implanted on the corner. And I just think it's, it's an awful proposal for a neighborhood that's working hard within itself to, to improve. I feel duty bound also as the school board president for Lantingburg to tell you that with the great lengths to educate our children on health issues, preach constantly, stay away from tobacco. And as a group of responsible adults, I would just ask you to consider denying this application. And anything else like it that comes into our neighborhoods. Thank you for your time.
Hello, Tina Yersen, 3306th Avenue, the District Two North Central Neighborhood Association. I have been in business at Bed and Breakfast for 22 years there, that neighborhood. Probably 47 years in Troy, my whole 70 years. First of all, I'd like to say that Steve Pierce from Freedom Square is not able to make it tonight. And he would like me to speak for him, saying he's against it until more information is known about it. One of the things I'd like to bring up is originally this went out with the address of 3667. I, living right on the block, did not receive any notice on it in the mail, like normally you would. I got the information very last minute. Kim Ash, our councilperson, cannot be here because she's at another meeting. But she also wants to have more information on it. And she's afraid that it's gonna morph into a marijuana dispensary. I myself don't think that's gonna happen because it's much too small for something like that with the room that they need. My objections to it are anything about how the hours of operation are gonna be. We don't know if there's gonna be age restrictions for the people that wanna go in there and patronize the business. Myself and Kim are worried about accessories being displayed in the window for children to see and think that it's okay for these things to be used in our neighborhood. If it's in the window, it must be okay. I myself know the size of that building. And I believe it's really too small even for a little smoke shop. If you just wanna do cigars, cigarettes or whatever, there is no really back room for storage there. And we all know that those are high profit items. There's two plate glass windows in the front of it, very easy at 3 o'clock in the morning to be smashed with a hammer and, and all the product be taken. I don't think they realize that, that that corner does have its problems with the fear of the theft that could possibly happen. So we're just asking, and I think it's gonna be, just set aside for a while until we could have more on exactly what the hours are gonna be, who's gonna be allowed in there, what kind of product they're gonna carry, so on and so forth. It's not a great corner for something like that. There's probably a lot of other things that could be brought up in the future for that area. But that is my objection to it going in, so we get more information on this. Okay? Thank you very much.
My name is Messiah James Cooper. I live at 24 Grace Court, Troy, New York, which is just around the corner from that place. And one smoke shop next to Freedom Square. That says a lot. And if you don't look at it like that, it says a lot about you. Why did you wanna put a smoke shop next to Freedom Square? Apart for children? The only reason you would do that is because you worry about, worry about your child ever being in Freedom Square. I do. My baby girl stays over there all the time with the sanctuary, doing events. Now she'll have to go and compete with what, who's, what is this smoke shop gonna draw? What type of individuals? We don't need any more smoke products in our area. They already give enough to the children. They give enough to underage children already. We got enough stores already that sell smoke products to our children. Now you, you want a, a smoke shop to sell them to our children? That's the only thing I could see, right next to Freedom Square. Go together. Now I see that they build chemical plants in our community. They go together. Let's kill them. Let's help. Let's keep poisoning them. Now I ask you, please don't poison my neighborhood anymore. We have enough poison there. Please do not poison my neighborhood anymore. My daughter and her friends hang out that park. They do a lot of events in that park. They don't need a smoke shop across the street from the park. Think about that.
Did any other members of the public wanna comment on this application? Are there any commissioner comments? Oh, thank you. Sorry. If anybody on the Zoom call can raise their hand, they wanted to speak about this application? Anyone?
So do we wanna table this? If the applicant is not here, do we wanna do a vote on it?
Yeah, I, I think one of the things that had been mentioned in the staff comments is that we would wanna discuss with the applicant what the parameters of the operations of the business would be proposed to be. So if the applicant to speak to that, then.
Definitely not, we'll be here tonight.
Right.
Question is table it? Or.
Take a vote.
I don't know how you'd be able to vote on it not having spoken to you.
Yeah. Sorry.
I'll pass that information on to him. And we'll make sure he's at the next meeting.
Yeah.
Shall we table it?
I think, I think.
I do have. I think in light of. We do. Commissioner Yagan does have some comments, I think, for the record.
So I'd like to address the members of the public that came to speak on this. First, I understand and echo your concerns. I think just as on the face of it, it kind of flies against logic as to why it would be there. It's a similar, it, it, it's a similar sort of conflict that we had to work through and explain in our last meeting on a different project. I'm trying to figure out the right words for this. Here's a good way to, I will read the staff recommendation to us. In our staff report, it says the use is being described as a quote neighborhood commercial establishment, which is an allowed use in the R4 district. The planning commission is often expected to moderate the types of businesses that are allowed in, in places where it's not necessarily something under our purview to, to even have the authority to direct. You know, if, if for instance, there were 100 sub shops down 10 blocks of a street and somebody else wanted to put a sub shop right next to the 100 that existed, we wouldn't be able to say, oh, there's already enough sub shops. You shouldn't put that there. It's, it's just simply not an avenue. However, what I'd like to ask of the other commissioners, of the engineer, is what, what measures can be levied to steer or to to make it such that the project, if it were to go forward, would really I guess what I'm, can't look proposals and evaluate them on business type unless it goes against the zoning stipulation, in which case it'd be on in, in front of us to consider.
That's, buddy, what you're, what you're getting. Who does not wanna smoke shop there? Like, how, how would they, how would that be? That's, buddy, what you're, what you're getting, who does not want a smoke shop there. Like, how, how would they, how would that be?
I'm worried.
That's Syria. You know, does that make sense? So
Robbie, can, can I just
Absolutely.
interject something here for a second. Um, there, there is a
Pull the mic right up to you.
Okay, can, can you hear me? The, the other thing we could do tonight is ask the architect who came on the, on behalf to give the feedback to the, the owner that this was not well received and it's an uphill, something, it's an uphill battle. And that way we, we see if it just goes away. We talked, before we talk about changing zoning and doing all of that, we just direct her, which would mean that we are not approving it and we are sending the best was now only and that time to I think
Now this architect, in his office, that it shouldn't be
Come on.
We understand.
We understand, we hear your comments, but I think as
As we table it and then he has to come in, he may already know. Shall I make a motion?
Meeting, so it's a date certain, so the public that's here knows you, you have a number of options that you can take, one of which would be
Talk right into the mic.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is affiliate Zarosa. I'm the
Louder, right.
Hi, my name is affiliate Zarosa. Sorry. I'm the owner of three oh nine Third Ave, a banquet hall, and the only thing that I'm adding on to that is security. Due to the recent criminal attacks, it has shown that event safety and security is important. The, the security is there to keep our eye on the clients and keep the staffs and guests safe. And keep the party crashers out of it due to them knowing that there's an event going on and people that they know is there and they're not invited. They sometimes try to come through and we have security there trained just to discreetly evacuate them off the premises. They also dare to help the clients just in case they can't get home, get too intoxicated. They can call taxi for them or emergency services if needed. And they're also there to like talk for me. I'm a female. I'm young. People get, well, guests can get really disruptive. And I have security there also to handle them. So I won't de-escalate it anything more. They also keep our eye out on the environment, so there won't be any poor safety going on, like, where there won't be any, like, damage to the property, to the environment, even likelihood injuries. That's what they're there for.
Chair, I have a couple of questions. That's okay?
Sure.
Um, so alcohol served on the, on the premises?
Yes.
You guys have a license?
Right now, we don't have alcohol served on the premises. We had a temporary alcohol license.
So you currently do not have an alcohol license?
So right now, currently no alcohol until we have, we need a letter from you guys.
What do you guys have on, um, for equipment onsite to cook meals? Do you guys serve meals?
Yes, we do. Yes. Uh, yes. We have meals. We have caterer online onsite and to go. We have party equipment rentals, so you can rent out. And we also have special events, receptions, weddings. We even have the Girl Scout from Troy come there for their ceremonies for free. We, we like to work with the community. We plan on working with the kids also. One, one week out, one day after week to give a special event for the kids.
So the business is currently operating as a banquet hall?
Yes.
The, the only change that you're proposing is the addition of
Security.
What, what are your hours?
Eight in the morning, twelve midnight.
And does that mean that right now you're not serving alcohol, but when you would serve alcohol, that, does that mean you serve alcohol till midnight or you close?
No, close at midnight.
Do you use the parking lot space as well for events or is it just, just the inside? I mean, are there outdoor events, nighttime, daytime?
Um, so far, no, we didn't plan on that.
You guys have regular business hours then, when you're open and when you're closed? You guys have?
Um, we actually go by events. If we have events going on, like wedding receptions, first we take those in first, but we also do catering nights.
Okay. Define a catering night. What's a catering night?
Like, we have, might have a special on a meal. Like, uh, say, Saint Patrick's Day, we might have a whole order.
So this facility, this facility is not solely rented out to, to groups and parties?
What do you mean by?
You run events out of this facility? It's not people paying you?
No, yes, it's other people paying for the property.
Exclusively?
Yes. Yes.
So who are your customers on Saint Patrick's Day?
Um, that's membership only.
Membership?
Yes.
You, I'm sorry, you, there's people that are members of this facility?
Of our, we, we like
All right. At, at this point, I think I'm prepared to make a determination. This is not a banquet facility. So I don't think that you guys need to go any further this evening. This, this would require a use variance. This is obviously, I, I don't believe this is a use in line with the previous use of the facility. It sounds to me like it's fit the definition of a nightclub, a restaurant, or some other
No, it's not. No nightclub. I'm sorry.
I, it does not appear to fit the definition of a banquet facility. Which I'll admit is a little gray because we don't actually define it. So we're going off of the, you know, dictionary definition of what a banquet facility would be, and I don't believe this needs it. So, um, at this point, I don't think you guys will have to take any further action until a use variance.
Can you clarify though? Because what you're saying is if it was just a place that was rented for a cater
Correct. If the events taking place were being, you know, if it was being rented to parties, separate parties, and the venue was providing the food or, or what have you, but that's not what's going on here. It sounds like the venue is running a business out of it. And, and that's different. So I think we'd have to talk a little bit more offline about exactly what's going on before I think they would be ready to be back here.
Sorry, Ms. Zara, did you want to say something?
Yes. No, it's not like that. We don't have catering every, every night. It's only special nights that is offered. But cater is for the people that is, that asks for it.
Members, I, I, you know, it just doesn't sound like a banquet hall to me. I'm not prepared to define it as a banquet hall this evening, so this would require a use variance. So therefore, I don't think you guys have to continue.
Request that she talk with somebody in the office? Dash.
Is this determined that a variance is needed and it sounds like it's, you'll work with me to get on the agenda for the CBA upcoming, but we'll, we'll work internally and offline with you directly to get that process worked out.
So, so a membership-based organization that uses the hall?
So far, that's what we look at, we plan on doing.
Like akin to an, like A O H or Elks Club or Lions Club or Veterans Hall, one of those types of organizations, similar, M C, uh?
I, I don't think, I think we should just refer. We're going to be here till midnight.
Now, I know that there was probably a lot of members of the public here that wanted to speak. Um, I don't know if you want to open it up with
Why would we?
We've received quite a number of, of comments and writing
Yes.
the establishment and the way it's been operated.
Yeah, we did receive some, uh, public comments already in writing that are part of the record. Distributed with the minutes of this meeting when they go online, uh, next month, but it sounds like well, there's two questions basically. One is what are we going to do with this application, the public hearing, and then the question of whether or not this property, uh, this proposal needs a use variance. So the question of the use variance is going to have to be dealt with with staff. Right. No, I know, but I mean, right, the applicant will talk with staff after tonight's meeting and, and follow up about that. Right. So as far as the application that's in front of us tonight, we're not going to take any action on it, so.
But you do have members of public who
Right. I, I, I think technically now that the interpretation of, of the use has been articulated, the change of use request before you was moot because the application no longer qualifies for change of use. So there is no re, there's no, it's not necessary for you to take any action because it's moot. They cannot obtain a change of use approval because of the determination of the use variance is required.
So what do we do?
I don't think you need to do anything. I think you, if you want to hear from the public that is here to comment on it, you have the ability to do so. Um, and at the conclusion of that, you just move on to your next agenda item. There's no action you can take. Your change of use request is moot.
All right, well, in light of that, I hope everyone, uh, from the public who is here heard that, but we're not going to be taking any action on this application tonight. Um, it sounds like it is likely that the applicant will be following up and possibly be on a future zoning board agenda regarding a use variance. If that happens, members of the public would have the opportunity to comment at that zoning board meeting in the future. However, if people are here to comment on this application tonight, we would give you the opportunity to speak, but understand that we're not taking any action, so it's not going to influence our acting one way or the other since we're not planning to act tonight.
Are you willing to public?
Well, let me ask this. How many people are here to speak on the application tonight?
Any in favor?
Is there anyone here to speak in favor of the application here tonight? Show hands. Okay.
We Sure, well, we'll take a couple of comments. Again, as before, please limit your comments to no more than three minutes. If somebody makes a comment that covers the ground that you were planning to speak on, please try not to be repetitive. State your name and, uh, and address for the record and
Do I get down?
Yes, sorry, you can sit down while the public comment comes up. So the first person who's here that to comment publicly wants to come up.
And, and the point that Erin made is that we are not taking action on this tonight, so we want to make sure that people get to be on the record.
Right. Yes. No, it can be helpful for the applicant to hear what people have to say. So this is both for the applicant's benefit and for yours.
Okay. All right. Once again, Tina, yours in thirty-three hundred Sixth Avenue, representing District Two Neighborhood Association. Some of the questions that we have, and I'll just kind of like go right through them, whether you want to get the answers from the applicant or not, that's up to you. Is she the owner of the building or is she just renting the building? That's one question. She's going to provide security. Right now, she's, does not have an alcohol license, so I'm thinking really what's security for if there's not going to be any out of control alcoholic drinking. All right. Is an alcohol license been applied for? Okay. Is that in the making? The times, twelve o'clock, does that mean everybody's done, gone, cleaned up and home? Okay. If there's no alcohol allowed now because you do not have an alcohol license, is a bring your own bottle allowed? I don't know how that goes with, with the, um, the board for alcohol consumption on pres, if you're not selling it, they bring their own. Uh, that's another question. The amount of people that will be allowed for any of the events, is there a maximum? I know I'm very familiar with the old Troy Club, which is a membership, like she said, a membership club. They pay dues. They have to go by certain rules. Only the members can come in. They have a key pad. No outsiders are allowed in unless it's a very event, then it's closely monitored. Is that going to be the same thing? She says it's a membership club. If they rent it out to other people for an event, who's responsible for the insurance? Should anything go wrong? The people renting for the event or this young lady herself? I think, I think that's it. I mean, that's most of the questions that were asked of me to ask of your people. Okay, so her next time back, I think she'd probably be a little bit better prepared to answer some of those things. I think that's it. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. To the Commissioner of Planning and members, I thank you for this opportunity to speak to you tonight on behalf of this proposal. My name is Anna Denny and on behalf of my mother, Gail Ruffer, who has resided at three one seven Third Avenue for almost thirty years. Our family comes before you tonight to ask you to consider not approving this proposal, which you mentioned you're going to be moving it to the zoning board. Our family's house is on the corner of Third Avenue and a hundred and seventh street, which is right next door to what was formerly known as the Germania Hall for many years. The current owners are requesting to be reopened as a venue for special events. The special events that have been allowed to transpire here are anything but special for the neighborhood. What I mean here is that unlike the ownership of Germania Hall, the events that went on this past summer in two thousand and twenty-one were horrendous, to say the least. And unlike anything we've seen before. The uncontrolled parties did not just happen within this venue. They happened outside on the streets until the early morning hours, definitely not twelve P M. And these early morning hours with alcoholic bottles and trash repeatedly being thrown all over the place, including over our fence onto our, but it didn't stop there. The uncontrolled parties continually flowed outside with fighting in the streets and loud bass music from the cars often double parked on the streets. On another occasion, when patrons of motorcycles having a revving contest with each other before going into the bar downstairs, which there was are during the summer. Don't misunderstand us. We love weddings, but we don't want to live in constant fear of someone getting hurt outside or having to clean up our lawn after every party. Lansingburg is having enough problems with crime rate and garbage as it is. Please don't allow this venue to continue to allow garbage to cover our precious neighborhood. I'm asking each of you tonight to please not let uncontrolled parties from this venue to continue in this quiet residential neighborhood where residents sincerely care about safety, clean streets, and the basic rights to enjoy our neighborhood. Again, I thank you for your time. Excuse me, when is the next zoning meeting, please?
Well, to be clear, the, the applicant hasn't actually put an application in front of the zoning board yet, so
Okay.
You'll just have to watch the agendas to see if, uh, maybe apply for, for a use variance.
Okay, thank you.
Plaza, one hundred and sixth street. I have, uh, three properties on that street, that corner, field daycare. I have three properties on that street, that corner, your daycare purchased and turned to residential. So the whole neighborhood is residential. And to reiterate what the young lady just said, it was a lot of issues over last summer with the garbage, the noise, the parking, the roads blocked constantly. Some of the residents, some that actually left their house for the night because they were that concerned for their, apparently their own safety. I mean, that's unacceptable. So I just kind of wanted to throw it out there, but you know, residential and even when the daycare was there, there were hours of stipulation on it. It wasn't, you know, free for all. So just to keep that in mind, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you, guys. June Carney, resident, three-twenty-nine Third Avenue. I share the same concerns. There have been police there. There is garbage on my street. There are loud parties. It does not need to be open until midnight. I want to see businesses thrive in this area.
Comments to the commission.
I want to see businesses thrive in this area. This is not the right kind of business, the way it's being run right now. What keeps it safe? What keeps the people inside? What keeps the noise down? What keeps out of my neighborhood? I mean, I literally pick up litter all the time from in front of my house. I just, it's just not, it's, it's not working right now. I was hopeful for it and it's just not working. Thank you.
Evening, Jamel Mohammed, and I'm a community member from the region. I'm a president and CEO of a community based organization that focuses on public safety. And I work with the law enforcement and public safety units throughout the capital region from Schenectady County, Albany County, as well as Mississauga County. And I have both a personal as well as business relationship with the applicant. And some of the things I just want to highlight or at least put into clarity, and I do understand there's no action to be taken on this. But just to put into clarity, the venue opened under the new ownership. And the intent and the interest was to follow through with exactly what the prior venues were. The, the intent is to have the wedding receptions, the different banquet events, whether it's for a teen pageant, events or other things, as Afria mentioned, with the Girl Scouts using it as well as, you know, hopefully and looking forward to opening it up to other community, even to the point of branching out into the community with, you know, time to base with the political as well as the community. And we do understand that this venue is in a neighborhood that can be kind of tricky, to say the least. There is residents around it. Some of the events, I have participated at most of them. And I do not recall any of the things that were mentioned, some of them as far as fights, motorcycles and other things there. I'm not saying it's not happening because I haven't been to everyone. But I do work with the captain of this Troy Police Department. And he has never had any of these events or any of these altercations taking place. So I'm just looking to put a little clarity as to the question as far as the liquor license and liquor being displayed or if it's bring your own bottle. It was controlled, there's a bar, there was a license temporarily issued. And the whole objective was to have everything as it was. As young owners of such a venue, the intent was to grow with the, with the business. So going into the business, yes, there were hiccups, there were things that everyone experiences. But they took upon themselves before this board or anybody came down on them to hire a licensed professional security team to help make sure. Now, some of the questions may come to say, well, why do they need security if all it is is a banquet hall? And I raised the question, why do churches allow gun carriers in their sanctuaries now because of they were living? So it's only prudent, looking at the culture and the climate that the country has moved to, to make sure that everyone is safe regardless of what the venue or what the antenna of the thing may be. Now, some of the community culturally uses were also repasses, which is the time for families to get together after funeral services. And we've seen, didn't matter what culture, what race or what part of the neighborhood it comes through, problems can come up at those events. So the whole idea was to be proactive, not reactive, to make sure that if there was an incident, that the proper people professionally were on place on scene to be able to control and contain that situation. As far as cleaning up outside, I do know that the owner has spent time themselves to go out and clean up after the event. It doesn't matter where you are, you're going to have litter on any venue or any, anywheres that you have it. To the point of where maybe our property, we apologize. And these are things that can be fixed. But to just take a blanket attitude that because it's a venue and potentially because it's a venue culturally not acceptable to the neighborhood, I hope that we can be more sensitive, more open minded to understanding and embracing the neighborhood, to look different and be different and not just to be biased as to what the ownership looked like and then anticipate a negative out of that. So I appreciate the time to speak on behalf of the owners as well as the community that's came out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Were there any other members of the public who wanted to speak? Okay.
Zoom.
Oh, was there anybody on the Zoom broadcast who wanted to speak? Okay, well, as we stated before, the, the present application, we're not going to take any action on it tonight. As in the opinion of our council, the application is moved. So we are going to move on to the next item on the agenda. Yeah, thank you. This is PLPC twenty-two-one sixty-one Forty-Fourth Street slash four, oh-three Fulton Street. Is the applicant present?
Good evening, the applicant, my client is not present today. Forty-Fourth Street. Forty-Fourth Street.
Yes.
Yes. I'm Barb Nelson, thirty-seven Bell Avenue, and I'm director at TAP. Just would like to state that it has always been TAP's policy to provide site plan services to all individuals so they can be, so they can understand and participate in the municipal planning process. We are not lawyers who are presenting cases or advocating in any particular fashion. But we want to assist people to have their to enjoy their position in the, in the process. Having said that, the applicant, Naika Alolafi, is working tonight. He's not able to be here, so he asks that I answer any questions that I can for you. His intent is to occupy the space at the corner of Fulton and Fourth with a deli. We've provided, we were asked to provide an interior layout of the deli equipment and the arrangement, the furnishings. For anyone who hasn't seen it, it is, there's a couple of tables for four seats, some, some lunch counters along the windows, some food prep area, a couple bathrooms and some merchandising space.
Dash, could we possibly put the interior layout on the screen? Thanks.
It's ours. He intends to be open from six A M. to eleven P M. and to serve deli, a deli menu, which I guess is sandwiches and salads and things like that. But I have no, we were not entitled to, we were not hired to do any signage design or interior layout. So the type of menu or the type of decor or the level of sophistication of the space, I cannot speak to. But I would note that that's not necessarily something that the zoning ordinance requires of an applicant either. So I think that I will allow you to have your questions and listen to the public.
Thank you. Any, any commissioner questions regarding the application?
And on behalf of the public, could I ask you guys to just stick your mouths right at those microphones? Because I'm hard of hearing and I can't imagine most people in the back can hear you guys. It's really got to just be a rock star.
Thank you.
I have a question, or is it public comment first? Do you know if the intention is for deliveries to be received through just the front door, rear of the building? Where, where they plan to take delivery?
You know, I, I don't specifically know that. I can tell you that I come to work down Congress Street every morning and every morning there are trucks making deliveries to the front doors. And I've been collecting pictures that I'm going to send to planning. But it is a pretty common.
That it is.
Pretty common loading situation. So I would suspect that it's probably a front door thing.
And you said it already, you don't know about any extra changes or anything?
No, we've informed him that his signage will have to be submitted and approved in accordance with, you know, normally we, you know, people don't invest in, in that kind of design work until they get their approvals. But we will make sure that we give him our section on the historic downtown guidelines. And, you know, we'll offer that service if he wants to, wants to engage us.
Okay, I think we'll move to public comments. Thank you. So are there any members of the public who can comment on this proposal tonight? As before, please state your name and address for the record. And please try to keep your comments limited to three minutes. Thank you.
Sure, I'm just going to pull up some notes here. So my name is James Kehoe. I currently reside at forty-two Fourth Street, so directly next door. Do you propose the allocation of this project? My wife and I purchased it several months ago. We also own the Whiskey Pickle, which is our Fulton Street around the corner and then also located in the same building as this project. And we're working on purchasing more property on Fulton Street to turn into development projects. So when we first heard that there is going to be a high end sandwich shop opening next door to the, our house that we just bought and right down the street from our bar, we got very excited. Turns out that we've been hearing more and more rumors that it's in fact not a high end sandwich shop, but more of a bodega style establishment, kind of like what's across the street and what's currently going on down the street. So Roddy made some comments earlier that it's not the purpose of the planning board to tell you what type of business you can and can't put into a street. If there are a hundred sandwich shops and somebody wants to add one more, I guess you can, unless there is something in zoning that prohibits that. So perhaps, you know, that, that might be the answer. Really, this is more out of, this is a, a prime development area. There's a, there are about to be likely two large development projects across the street at the side of the atrium as well as the Uplands and Parking Garage. And the plans for those are, as far as I know, see if they ever do come to pass, there'll be first floor retail spaces, you know, market rate apartments. So it's really becoming a kind of a destination and a more of a residential area. The confines of downtown, you know, to try to make try a destination where people want to come from all over and then hang out downtown. And adding another bodega on the quarter where there are already two operating bodegas and just doesn't seem like a, a great plan. Especially just to speak about Night Owl News, which is directly across the street. They've got a heavy loitering problem. And I don't imagine that things would be any different if you were to open a, a very similar business directly across the street. I think the problem would, would persist. I think that the seats that they have indicated that are going to be in there are quickly, they're not going to want them to be occupied. So I, I'm not even confident that the plans that they've given us are going to be the plans that actually, the layout plan that actually comes to be. And, and just to speak about the, it's, there's about ten percent of the store space devoted to food prep. So the designation of deli sounds a little bit of a stretch to me. I certainly don't think I would call something with ten percent of their space food prep a deli. So really, we, we just want to see things go into the neighborhood that aren't already there and to bring something. And if whatever the process needs to be to get there, we're happy to help spearhead that process and work with whoever we need to. But right now, I mean, the existing owners of their establishment down at Fourth and Congress, you know, it's certainly not a high end sandwich shop. And, you know, that's again immaterial to that process. But I think there's just been some misrepresentations in what it's going to be. And that's also concerning to me. So that's pretty much the extent of what I have to comment on. I'd certainly welcome guidance on how we can either postpone this or do, or do something to at least work with the, you know, the owner or the, you know, the proposed owner and make sure that it's, it's going to be something that adds value to the neighborhood instead of just kind of increases the existing problem that the neighborhood has.
I have a question for Annie and Andy though. What, what requests can we make on a consent of, of the applicant to show proof, for lack of a better word, that what they are going to install matches what they're asking for our consent on? What, is there a limit to documents that we can request of them?
So, so I think that the applicant has provided enough documentation. Andy just informed me that one of the requirements of a delicatessen is that they have seating inside, which of course is counter to a convenience store or bodega where every square inch needs to be product, right? So they have a site plan here that shows that, that seating and that seating is wired by our code. If they don't have ten seats inside, it's not deli anymore. You know, if it's nine seats, it's a convenience store at that point or something similar. And therefore, they wouldn't have a C O. at that point. So that becomes a building code enforcement issue. In terms of the application, you guys can have any stipulations you see fit. Hours of operation, you know, things like that. I suppose you could even, I think you could have a condition that limits the sale of certain items as well. Yes, correct, like no alcohol or?
Yeah, you can, you can regulate the sale of items if you have a rational, reasonable basis for doing so. I, I would just also add to what Aaron said, they've submitted a site plan as part of this change of use request. When, when they, when they pull a building permit and seek an occupancy permit, there's going to be an inspection to confirm that what they actually installed there and what they redesigned in place matches that site plan. They don't get to submit something to us and then go do willy nilly whatever they want once it's passed this board. There will be at some point in the process, the confirmation that what they submitted to you is what now exists in reality before it opens up.
I have just one further question. It's kind of a nitpicky thing, but I, I noticed on the floor plan that there's no indication of lottery sales. But there is indication of tobacco sales. I know those, the two things kind of go hand in hand. So I didn't know if there's, I'm certainly interested to find out if they're planning on selling lottery there because that is gambling and that's certainly, I know that is a different type of classification. But we certainly don't want to bring gambling to our corner. That's it.
Thanks.
So we're done with the other comments?
Well, I was going to figure more.
So Erin, I'm glad that you clarified that, that there are definitions of what a deli is.
In, in this case, there is a definition.
Okay, so we've had, there were a lot of comments, a lot of written comments came in regarding this. And the big fear is it, is that it's not a deli. And I think we have to determine that, not just from the plan, but also I think the owner is going to have to appear at some point. Because it's just, you know, he says he's this, everybody's afraid that it's like his other place, which is very close and definitely a bodega.
So some additional measures that might help to achieve that or for us to know that what they're showing is a deli, I think would be going beyond just the layout, seeing more detail, seeing.
I think I can, Barb, is it possible that you can, can work with your client to perhaps draft up a, just a one page narrative of operations and, and what the proposal is? And I think that might clarify for the board members.
I can also verify, we asked him today, are you selling liquor? He said, no. And I, and I do think that.
And I, and I do think that this, the large storage area there also includes some amount of food prep. There's a three bay sink there. So we'll get a little more detail, maybe a list of equipment, that kind of thing. And maybe we'll.
I mean, it's like a standard sixty forty split to me between backup house and front of house sort of.
I, I've never run a deli, so.
We just, we do need more confirmation, all those confirmations that it really is a deli.
Yeah. Yeah, we did encourage him and we'll, we'll make sure he gets here next, next time.
Okay, since we opened the public hearing, are there any other members of the public who can to speak about this application tonight? On a Zoom broadcast, if there's anybody who came to speak about this application, please raise your hand or otherwise indicate if you wanted to comment.
And is our action here then to table it?
It sounds like, yeah, we've, we've asked for some additional information from the applicant, so I think we should just table this to the December fifteenth.
I move to table it.
I second it.
All right, moving to a vote, Barbara Higbee.
Yes.
Suzanne Spelling.
Yes.
Bobby Yeagan.
Yes.
I vote yes. Motion carries. Application twenty twenty one sixty one adjourned to December fifteenth. Okay, and. The last item on the consent, or on the, from the consent agenda that's on New Business is twenty twenty one sixty three. That's fifty eight sixty two King Street. Do we have the applicant present? Good evening.
Hi, my name is Mel Tuttman. I currently reside at two sixty three in Lansenberg, First Ave. And I'm the current owner of fifty eight King Street, where I'm trying to open a delicatessen bar. Not sure what other information you guys would like to know, but I'm ready to answer any of it.
Barb, I know you had a question.
First of all, I'm your back to back neighbor. Hello.
Nice to meet you.
And I'm not against the project at all here, but I, I'm familiar with the block there on, on King Street. And, and I'm not familiar with exactly what you're talking about here. But the two questions I had was one is garbage collection on King Street. Because there has been not garbage collection for the, the record store and that building. And, and that's not really a question for you. That's really a question for the city. And the other is just, just your operations and how you do it.
Like hours or?
Hours and what actually it is. What, sorry about that. The, of the, what the operations really are, what, what this?
Yeah, so it'd be best to think of it sort of in two parts. It's a huge building. I don't know if you've been inside, but it's beautiful. So from eight AM, which is noted on there till six, I want to operate a deli out of it. That'll be a selection of sandwiches, wraps and salads, coffees and non alcoholic drinks. Alcohol will be available for people over twenty one, obviously, at the appropriate times. Around five, I want the bar section to open, which will be operating on the other side of the building, sort of in the back, at which point your games open up. Sort of a space for the community to come have an after work drink, have some dinner, because the deli menu will be available after the deli itself is not open.
So I guess the question is really then to the city, will they be able to put their garbage out on King Street? Because there's no place else to put it. There's no backyard or anything. By not the city. Okay, I guess just. Yep. Okay. Yeah. Okay, and then it, but, no, but it is the city's obligation to do that, but you'll explain. Okay, okay, good. Okay, I think that was my only question. And, and it's residential upstairs?
There is no upstairs.
There is no upstairs.
No, it's just the one, one floor. Yeah, the Dalback audio.
Okay, well, that was my main question was just how, how it functioned.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, great. Yeah, the, I don't think any parking would be required, but there is.
No, it will just be street parking.
And, and the street parking is quite filled. The street parking is quite filled. Yeah, well, the RPI stickers are all up and down that, that King Street. Okay. I didn't have any other questions.
All right. Is there anything else the board would like to know?
No, I, since we, since we did move this to new business, we will give the public opportunity to comment in case anybody did come. Are there any members of the public who wanted to comment on this application? On Zoom? You have one on Zoom.
Cool. Yes. I do.
Oh, the ding thing?
What ding thing? Am I, am I on?
Yes, go ahead and share your name and address for the record and feel free to share your comment with us. Thank you.
All right, thank you. My name is Matthew Klein. I'm the co-owner of Sound House Records at fifty two King Street, which is the business next door to Mel's proposed business. I'd like to start off by saying that we are absolutely thrilled that somebody is finally moving into King Street. We have been there for six months. We have been the only business in town other than Troy Brewing Company, Troy Beer Garden, on the corner, and we would love to see more people coming in and setting up shop on King Street. The major concern, and I think that this has been addressed already at this meeting, is parking and garbage. There is very little parking on King Street, King Street itself. There are city lots that are not available to customers. And as somebody mentioned, it seems that most of the street parking is now occupied by residents of the King's Landing building. So while we do want to see more businesses move into King Street and there are many empty businesses available, we are very concerned about parking and ways to just make it easy for our customers to come and visit our businesses. And also like somebody said, the garbage situation, we did struggle with garbage at first to get it picked up. We are now on the city's radar, but we, we have very little garbage. A business serving food is going to need more attention than we do. And we just want to make sure that something is in place to make sure that that garbage is picked up. Thank you.
Did any other members of the public want to comment? Okay, so I know we've discussed the question of garbage collection. And the question, I guess basically is whether or not we want to table this until we get some clarification on that or whether we.
I don't think we need a clarification because we have it. And that is that this is commercial, so it has to have its own garbage, whereas that is, has residential upstairs, the building next door. So that was a different thing. I, I want to think that question.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Or contingent upon our.
Right.
Yeah.
They won't be able to operate.
Right.
Right.
It's unacceptable to the city, but, you know, they will be.
Okay.
Yeah, so my question was basically whether or not we want to table it or just.
I think we should take it.
Or just take action and then contingent on.
Yeah, which they will do. There's nothing, there's nothing can be done. I mean, there was nothing, it's just, it just is. It, it's just a fact. No, I was, and that's why I wanted to just say, I was not questioning the project. I'm very much in favor as the next door neighbors.
All right, so if one of the commissioners, do we have a proposed action?
Okay, we don't send, are we just moving approval?
It would be, it would be a motion to approve the, the conditions.
Okay. Okay, so I moved the approval of PL PC two oh two one zero zero six three as presented with the, and, but, and then contingent upon them informing the city of the arrangements they'll make for the, for the garbage collection. And it will be a private arrangement. Okay.
Is, is there, is there a requirement for a site planner now, just because it's a change of use?
The, the site is the building in this case. Essentially, there's, there is no.
I meant for the interior layout, just like the previous.
No, there's no floor plans or not, or something we, we, for larger buildings, we, we ask that they provide that simply because it's good to have a cursory review of the fire, access routes and things through the building so that they don't, you know, design a very large structure that this is existing, so.
I, I only ask because on the previous applicant, also deli, we, we talked a lot about their division of floor space and how they use, how they're going to use it. So I know that's something we need to do, address on every, every one of these.
I think the commissioners would have to ask themselves anything different about this proposal than the previous one.
Well, it was. Well, also was the reason for the other was there were so many comments about, is it a bodega? So, and that is, no one's asking that.
Okay, so I second it.
So the, the motion was for approval contingent on providing information about the garbage collection arrangement once it's available.
Submission of a rubbish removal plan to the city engineer's office.
Exactly.
Right, can you?
Moving to a vote, Barbara Higbee.
Yes.
Suzanne Spelling.
Yes.
Bobby Yeagan.
Yes.
Anthony Moan, yes. Motion carries, so this application is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. So now we're moving on to the items that were already on the new business agenda. The first is PL PC twenty twenty one sixty four. This is two two four five Old Sixth Avenue. Good evening.
Good evening. Nick Costa from Advanced Engineering and Survey. And we're here on behalf of the applicant, Gemma Odie, who is proposing to convert the existing building at twenty two forty five Old Sixth Ave into fourteen apartment, residential apartment units. The building, if, if I could have the site plan placed, dash. The building is existing. The site is fully developed. We're rearranging some things on the site to provide the necessary parking spaces, which are fourteen, one per each apartment unit. And we're also converting the, the existing play area into a, a, an amenity for the, for the residents. Thank you, Nash. So this, this is the existing building. It has frontage along Old Sixth Avenue. And it also, all right. It also has, backs up into Earl Street at the rear. We're proposing to access the site and there, you can see the parking spaces that we're proposing for each resident. And there's also access of Old Sixth Ave. And as I started to say before, this area is being converted to green space with some tables and some barbecue areas. Just an amenity area for, for the residents. The main entrance to the building is over this location. So we do have a parking, handicap parking space that will be able to be accessed along this sidewalk, this proposed sidewalk. That will come over to the, to the main entrance. So it is a fully developed site. It does have utilities, connections. The existing building has utility connections on Earl Street. It has a sanitary sewer connection and also six inch water service connection. And on Old Sixth Ave, it also has a, a water, it's a smaller line. It's a one and a half inch water connection and a sanitary sewer still located there. So those municipal services will remain as, as they are. There's no need to change and the, the six inch line at the rear will be brought into the building. It is already into the building, but it will be utilized to provide the required sprinkler system, fire sprinkler system. So that's the proposal that Ms. Adi has in front of the, of the, of the board. And if there are any questions, she is here with me tonight. And we would, we would be more than happy to try to answer your questions. Thank you, Nash.
My only comment would be the through drive, you, you may want some no through traffic signs.
Sure, that's fine.
That's, that's my immediate takeaway. Just take, taking a look at it.
Yeah, I, I think, I think we have, what we've shown on the site is we've shown a do not enter sign along with the stop sign.
That is a good point because we do have that issue further down the street between Sixth and Earl as a cut through. But the old sixth is one way, so it's a little less, but, yeah, but, yeah, we, it's, it's a good point.
We can certainly add that, that additional signage.
And are the, I don't know if you're a senator, but are the units one and two, Sam, one and two bedroom or?
Bedrooms, yeah. I believe it's a mix, right? It's a mix. Yes, it's a mix of one and two bedrooms.
I mean, if you're looking for staff comment, the only reasons on, on new business as opposed to consent is scale of the project requires secret review. But it is an existing structure. Majority of the work, as is clear by the, the packet, is interior work. A large architectural package for this, to retrofit the, the previous building. But the site, site work lies, it's pretty straightforward, so.
Are there any other commissioner questions or comments?
I'm just glad that the building is being reused and so, thank you.
You're welcome. Are there any other members of the public who would like to speak about this application tonight?
Again, my name is James Masala Cooper. I reside at twenty four Grace Court, Troy, where now I come before group people as. Humble myself. I'm appalled to look at that damn picture. That's the only, only community center we ever had in the, in trailer that was hijacked by the city. Given the CEO and then just a city, the building became available, it was hijacked again. It was hijacked again. I've been fighting this city for a community center to try to change these babies in this community. And literally, every time the, the building that we had, the community center, came back available, you sell it. You don't want to change, Troy. You want to create monsters. That's what I say. You want to create monsters. Look at, look at, it's beautiful. That's a mockery to me. The only community center we ever had in this city for black and brown people. And you propose to make your fourteen unit housing. For who? I wonder how you people sleep at night. And you say you want change. I tell you, I'll give you change. Give me that damn building and I'll show you change. You plant a tree in honor of that baby. Put that building in, in his name. Create a building in his damn name. Save some babies. You planted goddamn trees. How do you sleep? How do you go to fucking bed at night? And everybody else, you. That you deny a community center that might say, even say one of their damn law.
Shall I say a couple words here? The, the two, the next proposal down is the daycare center that used to be in this building, which is now the CEO building us.
Yeah, that's correct.
And it's going to be moved to the next street over.
Yeah, they're expanding that facility.
Pardon me?
Yes, they're expanding that facility.
So it was a community center, then it was a daycare center, now then it's, it has moved and now it's moving to an expanded center a block away.
Yeah.
Just, yeah, just for the record. So, does the owner want to come up and just say?
Good evening. So the community's taken for, you know, three years or so, just so that's on the record. I don't know what else you guys want us to comment about.
Two blocks down. We have brand new bigger.
Right, and it's nothing to do with you.
No, brand new and bigger, nicer, more kids can be there. And we're trying to clean the block up, so.
For the record too, we do understand his concerns and.
No, I understand exactly where he's coming from. But I think he's looking at it the wrong way because we're trying to clean the block up so we don't have these tragedies in the community anymore.
And you.
What you said just didn't make any sense.
Well, let's not worry about that. So you're, you're prepared to both to do the development. You've got your professionals and.
Can you guys just speak in your microphone?
Yeah. So, okay, I didn't have any other questions. I just thought you'd come up.
There's just always a perception that the planning decides what, what gets to go in certain places. And it's really more what a developer who owns a piece of property is looking to do with, with it. And then we steer the project towards the best project. It could be if it's a permitted use.
Yeah, this board has nothing to do with the sale of city property or anything like that.
We did not.
Okay, that was all my questions.
We're glad to hear that you're a part of the neighborhood. We've bought other parcels on the block, so we have high expectations for.
We're trying to clean that whole three street right up like this.
Thank you.
That whole chunk, you know, good area where we don't have dumb children in jeopardy anymore. People aren't afraid to walk down those streets in the heart of here.
Right, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who wanted to comment about this proposal? On the Zoom broadcast, did anyone? Okay, so we need to make a figure.
Sorry, a member of the public just, just has indicated a desire to speak. Brian, feel free to unmute yourself and share your comment and address the record.
I'm on Zoom, sorry. I am a. I own one of the buildings half a block away and I am very much in favor of investment on the street. It's been spiraling down. I I've been talking to some of the residents for years. And they, what they've looked for is resources to renovate buildings so the place is cleaner and safer. I think this proposal is a really great thing for Old Six. I personally find it a challenging street right now because there's so much apprehension about safety. There's three killing shrines for under, you know, underage kids were shot. So I, I think there has to be change and the only way change happens is investment and commitment. And I'm really very happy about this current proposal. That's it.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
So do we have to do a secret determination?
We do, yeah. So.
It's unlisted.
It's unlisted.
Yeah, yeah, they submitted a, the applicant submitted a short seeker form. We reviewed it. We didn't have any further questions.
So what's the next step?
We need to declare ourselves lead agency, right, determination on seeker.
I need to, you, you don't have to declare.
Oh, there's no.
You can just act on seeker.
Okay, you can actually just do it one motion. So it's clear. We declare ourselves lead agency and entertain a negative declaration. Do it one motion.
Okay, so I'll do that.
All right.
I move that the Troy Planning Commission be declared lead agency and we make a secret determination.
Negative for positive.
Unlisted secret determination.
Negative, negative.
Negative. That's why I don't do these.
I'll second. Going through a vote, Barbara Higbee.
Yes.
Suzanne Spellen.
Yes.
Roddy Yagan.
Yes.
Anthony Moan, yes. So make a negative declaration for secret purposes. And then if we have enough information, we can vote to approve the site plan.
Is there anything else anyone wants? Is there anything else you guys want to see?
Unless we want any further information from the applicant before we, we make a motion.
No.
Okay.
Then. Sure, I'll make a motion that we approve the site plan.
I'll second that.
Going to a vote, Barbara Higbee.
Yes.
Suzanne Spellen.
Yes.
Roddy Yagan.
Yes.
Anthony Moan, yes. So the site plan is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is 2021 67, 26 New Turnpike Road. Do we have the applicant present?
This is, this is another one that was moved to new business because of the unlisted status. We didn't, staff didn't have any comments on this matter.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Andrew Leia and I'm Attorney Damon, representing the applicant National Grid here this evening. With me tonight is Mr. Jacob Kimball, who is the project manager for this proposed substation expansion. The existing Corliss Park Electric Substation at 26 New Turnpike Road is in need of expansion, is in need of rehabilitation or refurbishment, I should say. And it's, it's a good thing because expansion signifies growth. And the growth in energy usage requires that the company in turn take steps to ensure that energy consumption and provision stays robust and reliable. So this is looked upon as a positive for the local area. And we're doing our best to keep that as a positive. If I could briefly go over the, the quick site elements we're discussing here tonight. As part of that expansion, it includes the rebuilding of existing assets on the site. These assets are transmission, substation conversion equipment. And the expansion of the substation boundaries to the north and to the east to allow the addition of new assets. New, new substation assets to handle the increased energy demand. There will be new foundations placed within the expansion area to handle the new equipment that's going to be placed in there. There's also going to be a third driveway we're proposing to the south of the existing two driveways. And that is to accommodate a, in the event a mobile station is needed, if the substation is down for some reason or needs some type of, of maintenance. A mobile station can be brought in and hooked up. But it's, it needs to be brought in in a way to allow its easy hookup to the existing assets. So we're proposing a new third driveway to the south gravel. That won't be used most of the time except for that mobile station in, in the event it's necessary. We're also proposing an improvement of the existing shortcut walking trail that exists across, diagonally across our site. That trail leads from residences to the northwest down to the Dollar General Plaza, which is immediately to the south. It's been an informal trail, a dirt trail over these many years, but in discussions with city planning staff, we have opted to make some improvements to it. We're going to gravel it, make it much more walker friendly and much more delineated as a trail across our site, leading right down to the back of the Dollar General Plaza. We're also going to be doing some work in the rear of the property, which has some wetlands in it. But it's some, some subtransmission work. These are the lines that come into the station from the east. And that involves putting in one new pole, but removing two existing poles. So there will be a net removal of one pole as part of this work. Tonight, we're seeking thicker declaration for the project together with site plan approval. And we've received the planning department's comments and recommendations. We acknowledge those. And we're here tonight to answer any comments you may have regarding the project. Thank you.
Thank you. No, I'll listen.
You mean on New Turnpike Road?
So.
Just paved.
So there would be feeder work going underneath, but there would be no digging.
So you're going to directional drill?
Uh, no, there's existing terminals underneath and we're speeding lines through it.
So you have empty conduit. Are you installing another transformer?
We're replacing the existing transformer.
Replacing existing, what's the voltage?
Thirteen two, sorry, thirteen two.
Thirteen two, so distribution. Is it going to change the frequency of maintenance or how, how often National Grid would be servicing the substation, having to go inside of it?
If anything, it would lessen it just due to the, the current status of the existing transformer being over fifty years old.
So I've never seen the actual site. I know where it is, but I've never actually really looked at it. It's all fence around it so that when you do gravel that path, people won't be able to access the electrical equipment.
Yep, so there's the existing fence. The proposed fence is actually going to be higher. And so it'll, it'll be essentially safer. And then the proposed walking path will also, that'll keep people. Currently, there's a dirt path that's been formed over the years just by people cutting through the property. So the proposed walking path will help keep, keep people further south of the station for safety concerns. So as you can see right here on the Google Maps images, they kind of cut around the fence. So the goal is to push that more to the south so that it's safer.
Okay, great.
Is there, is there any modification that needs to be made to the grounding grid since you're replacing the fence?
Uh, no, that's my knowledge.
Proposed walking path.
You're, you're replacing the fence around it, right? Six foot high, you're going to eight foot?
Yeah.
Okay.
And expanding it to the northeast side of the station.
I'm sure National Grid has a standard around their substations. Is it a non-climb river like mesh?
Yeah.
The walking path, you're talking about installing and forgive me if you already explained this. Concrete sidewalk, dirt path, crush stone. What was the plan for it?
It would be loose gravel, yeah.
Loose gravel. Maintenance wise, is there anything to consider on our part about that path or is that?
We have nothing to do with that path. It's, it's nice that the property owner would allow people to use their property, but the city has no liability over that path and neither does the owner. So I believe it falls under recreational use statute.
So are we up with actions, required actions? So this one too, we need to make a secret determination and then we can either do the site plan or if there's more information you need, you can ask for whatever else we need.
Is there any public comment?
Yes, we will also take public comments. Is there anybody from the public here tonight who wants to comment on the application?
I would. My name is Joe Johnson. I live at 28 Hogney Road in Troy. I actually travel this road frequently. I think the city did a great job paving it and putting sidewalks up. Just kind of reviewing the site plan here. I looked, it's real, you know, utilitized. They're, they're talking about an eight foot fence with barbed wire on top of it. You know, some of those driveways that are leaving into New Turnpike, it looks like they're going to be left as stone. I just, you know, I, I, me, I, I don't know if there's a way to clean this up with some landscape and blacktop. I don't know why everything's just all stone. And if there's any way to kind of hide this from the road, there's also some mention in here about three LED floodlights thirty feet high. Right now, there's like one that just sits kind of below. So this is kind of surrounded by some homes in the, in this particular substation. So I just, just looking at it, it just looks like a jail compound with, you know, transformers in it. If there's any way to make this thing, you know, look a little better from the street or in this neighborhood, I think, you know, that's something that should be considered.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who wanted to comment, either here in person or on Zoom? So regarding the floodlights, are those on? What times of night are those on?
The floodlights themselves are reserved for emergency purposes or maintenance purposes in dark hours. They are manually triggered by someone who enters the station. Otherwise, they are not on at all at any other time of the day. Only when personnel are there on the site and it's dark and they need the light.
The existing driveway there looks paved to me. The proposed driveways look like they're proposing crushed stone. Or stone.
So I, I think a compromise between, you know, paving all of those driveways might be to at least extend asphalt twenty feet from the roadway provided a brim.
I think that's what they're doing right now.
Way you don't have, you know, plows that kind of exceed the limits of the road, scraping up the gravel, throwing it on the roadway.
That's where I'm coming at it from.
You know, but to make it all paved doesn't. You know, but to make it all paved doesn't, these aren't used, these aren't used daily.
Just like what they're showing or what I see in streets, um, that, that would kind of be my request. Exactly.
The existing lights are on right now, like twenty-four seven, so I don't know if that's just a dusted dawn thing, but I just, even if you look at the Google streets, it's, it's a twenty-four seven. Like the light is on in the Google image.
I'll see where it is.
Yeah, there appear to be some lights on the poles that are either day burners or.
That could be.
Yeah.
But certainly we're not planning to have it lit uh, on an ongoing basis. Um, just, just the floodlights for emergency uh, purposes or maintenance purposes in the dark hours.
Is the vegetation that's between the fence and the road going to remain?
No, that will be actually be removed.
Hmm.
And there will be uh, plantings in accordance with, I think, your recommendation. Uh, the, the planning department's recommendations in that regard.
Maybe some invited.
Actually, we were told deciduous trees are preferred there.
Okay, I'm just thinking of what's tall that would cover a fence.
Yeah, screen point.
Consideration.
Thought that we had on that, um, given that it's, I guess it's relatively screened from neighbors on the other sides. But screening from the road, that's something you guys want to consider. Um, and then you could also, if you wanted to, you could ask for a photometric plan of what it. When the floodlights are on, what is it lighting up?
I can assure you, it will be bright when the floodlights are on, but the floodlights are all in focusing into the station.
Well, and that's what I mean, right? If you can show, if they can show that even when the floodlights are on, the light's not, you know, it's not leaving the property, it's, it's, you know, again, they don't. Lights take energy, cost money, they, they only want to light what they need, so.
Yeah. And then another concern is I understand the site, you know, won't maybe utilize when people are there to, for maintenance purposes, but if people walking by could trigger the lights, turning them on and off. So maybe just some idea of how the motion sensors are triggered there.
No, it, it won't be motion triggered lights. They will be manually operated. Someone actually has to enter the station, go into the control house and flip a switch to turn on those floodlights. That's the only way they'll, they'll be operating.
So if, if there's a need to perform work in that site, on that site at night, you have the ability to turn on lights so your workers have a.
To illuminate the site for safety, that's correct.
And then they do the work, they get the lights back on.
The light off and they leave the station, the station goes dark.
So if somebody's walking by or got the big trust test and they're not kicking those lights on.
No, they're not motion sensitive.
Yeah.
So yeah, the two things that come to mind, I might as well see is like, uh, and just the photometric plan and then maybe some planting details to see whether or not what they're putting on there would actually screen. The, the site, do any commissioners have any other suggestions or comments?
I, I think at the end of a substation like middle of the neighborhood, it's ideal to have as much screening as possible. I think neighbors probably appreciate that. It's something I would like to see, it was, would be the plantings.
That was my question. Do we want to see them or do we want to talk with Dash? Do we want to see those plantings or do we want them to just go to staff and?
I'm fine, I'm fine with that.
I believe you can delegate the review authority to whoever you'd like.
Yeah.
Uh, but we, yeah, what we can't do is approve conditionally upon your review, the planning commission's further review.
Yeah, yeah, no.
Right, so you'd have to pass that off to city staff.
And you could condition um, an approval on city staff reviewing and confirming a photometric plan that meets the guidelines that were presented by the applicant. As well as um, discussions with city staff for appropriate uh, landscaping. Um, or, you know, use of trees, you can, you could absolutely delegate that, make it a conditional pool.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with photometric plan. I guess my one question with the plantings, you know, we are, it sounds like there were a lot of aesthetic considerations around the improvements to this site. Given where it's located and I wonder whether people are comfortable with the plantings being delegated to uh, city staff.
I don't, I don't have a preference.
I have no preference.
I don't either.
Okay. All right, well, keep things moving along then. Um, I'm going to suggest we move for a secret determination. And then uh, we can figure out if we want the site plan to be, to be contingent on any further information. So uh, do we have a motion for?
Sorry.
Right?
Sure, I will make a motion that declares us lead agency as well as making a negative uh, seeker determination.
I'll second that. Going to vote Barbara Higbee?
Yes.
Suzanne Spellin?
Yes.
Roddy Yagan?
Yes.
Anthony Moan, yes. So we make a negative declaration for seeker. Regarding the site plan, yeah, I, I think if we do approve the site plan tonight, we would want to make a contingent on the two things that we've discussed, which are that. The photometric plan and planting detail be submitted to city staff, the city engineer. Basically. Identifying the thing that we're discussing tonight, um, which were that all the lights are focused inward on the site and that screenings. Are we only talking about the street or?
I, I would, I would think the screening should also be on the southern side of the site.
Yeah.
There is a residential use to the south and I think just the corner perhaps. So um, yeah, the, 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 the southern, the southern edge of that city should also have some screening. So as you're, you're going up New Turnpike, you know, provides a little bit of. Screening from twenty-two is the address to the south.
So we approve this site plan contingent upon uh, the submission of the isometric lighting plan. As well as the plantings plan that must be approved by city staff.
So just, just to be quick, photo match.
Photo match. Did I say? Yes. Angled.
I second the motion.
Okay, all those in favor of Barbara Higbee?
Yes.
Suzanne Spellin?
Yes.
Roddy Yagan?
Yes.
Anthony Moan, yes. Site plan is approved with those, uh, subject to those conditions. So just submit those plans to the city engineer's office uh, once they're available.
Will do. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Good night.
Okay, next item on the agenda. PLPC twenty. This is two, three, six, eight, Fifth Avenue.
I brought a lot of words with it, but everything is on the slideshow except for this is the rendered version of the site plan. Everything else is.
I'll pull that up now.
What's your?
Yeah.
This is the one we just talked about.
Good evening.
I was waiting for the slideshow, sorry.
Oh, yep.
Uh, do you have a preferred uh, site plan or drawing you'd like me to display here that's different from what's shown on the board?
I would say pull up all the architectures.
Okay.
All right, I'll start with the introductions. Dennis Frusso with SRA, right, with me tonight, Kevin Galatelli with SRA, Andy Rum with Jason. So uh, CEO has the existing CRC building on Fifth Ave and they're looking to add an eighteen thousand square foot addition, roughly eighteen thousand square foot addition to it. The first floor will house three classrooms for early childhood. And that space also, they'll have support space for the offices as well as toilet rooms and additional support space for the classrooms. There will be an interconnecting corridor that connects to the existing building. Where are the building? We're looking to add a storage facility, storage to support their um, all the buildings they have on Fifth Ave. It's in the building, we're looking to put a playground there and it will be uh, divided to support two age groups to meet the uh, requirements of OCFS. On that note, all three classrooms will be uh, licensed by OCFS. We have our parking lot that will be fenced in. There will be a gate on the Fifth Ave side as well as Earl Street. The facility storage will be outside the gated area. It will go to the second floor plan. Upstairs, right now they're looking to do multi-purpose spaces upstairs that will be primarily used um, after hours between five and eight. To educate the community of the different programs that are available to them. As you guys know, CEO administers the Restore Home and Empowered Program as well as Weatherization. There will be some open office space that they'll put in tubes for overflow of offices there. This floor will again have an interconnecting uh, corridor. Next slide please. This is the look from uh, Fifth Ave. Over to the right is the existing CRC building. We have in the middle is the playground. In the rear of this picture, we can see the inter, uh, interacting corridor that connects the two buildings. And this is the new addition we're looking at. This will have its entrance grade level. And it will be made up of bricks similar to what is on the CRC building. Up high will be a cement board siding, product that's called Nichihi. And it will be in different colors as we demonstrated there. The entryway will have a raised area where we will have it lit up. So you, uh, as you enter, you'll see it. Next slide please. Here's another view uh, looking down Fifth Ave. From their um, existing youth build center. So this shows the gated area. To the left and the entryway. Next slide please. This is in the back section from sort of, sort of CDT area, looking at the back. So there will be a, an entryway here. For the second means of regress out of the space. The space in the rear, that's our facility storage. That will have a mural painted on, uh, fiber cement siding. Again, we're keeping the rhythm of the brick around and the Nichihi panel up high. Next slide please. This is the existing site plan. That we have, so as you guys are aware, CEO uh, removed this building here. In anticipation of this project moving forward. Next slide please. I keep, yeah, keep going home. Little further, more next one. Yeah, yeah, keep on going to a real, here we go. All right, so this is a um, several site plan. Right now we show some street plan, I think, which is cut off picture here, but yes. So we do show additional uh, trees going in on Fifth Ave. We do show a crosswalk, proposed crosswalk going in. We would ask that we would do the same uh, solar powered uh, crossing signs that we have added down at the other entrance on Fifth Ave. CEO would install that um, um. In this project, uh, the playground is noted here. That will be regulated by OCFS and the requirements that they require for kids. So the playground will be a artificial turf field. It's actually uh, like a rubber field, rubber uh, composite flooring with ADA. Uh, playground equipment and some sun shades for shelter for the students, children. Uh, the anticipation is that we would have the parents drop the kids off either in front, bring their kids in. Or they would come in off Fifth, park in uh, some of the parking spots that are there, bring their kids in and either. Sit or back on Fifth Ave and get onto uh, the highways there. Next slide there. I think it's now we just get into really all the grading plans. So yeah, well, it just, I guess the one thing I should have backed up and mentioned, early childhood for the three classrooms, they will run between eight and three. So the students get dropped, dropped off around eight o'clock. The parents come back at three o'clock to pick them up. CEO staff shows up around seven thirty and stays about four o'clock to support early childhood. And as I mentioned earlier, the second floor, when it comes to uh, activities that involve the outsiders uh, at, on off hours, it would be primarily from five to eight. And from there I'll let Andy jump in to add anything for the civil site.
Good evening. Um, just to reiterate what Dennis was saying on Fifth, just to give you a little bit of a picture. What we see out there right now is the sidewalks are really poor condition along that section of Fifth. Um, we look, feet lighting, we look to propose adding in the, the city standard sixteen foot post-up lighting along the fifth corridor. Uh, put in a, so a couple of trees along the, the street frontage to try to get that street frontage back. Basically, there's one dead tree essentially within that corridor right at, at the moment. Um, the entry and exit points are pretty close to where they actually currently exist um, on the site, so they would be uh, kind of a shift. Um, on the utility side, there is a water line in Fifth Avenue and uh, it's an eight inch water line and there's a larger water line. And Earl Street, we're proposing our connection actually, Dash, do you want to go to the next um, slide there? Yep, that's perfectly fine. Uh, in the sanitary sewer, the angled line you see on the plan there, we're planning on taking the sanitary sewer out to the back onto Earl Street. Uh, what we found out in doing this is um, the project wants to, it's a sister project to the existing facility to the south. The building is connected. What we found is the storm sewer. The dirty sewer network for a portion of that facility there at Earl Street. And we're able to disconnect those two. So we're able, we submit our engineering reports uh, to the city for that. So we're able to do a betterment when it comes to managing uh, and separating, truly separating the combined sewer system out here. And as I said before, the water kind of goes out front. Dennis mentioned uh, the perimeter. Uh, the perimeter right now is basically has a chain like security fence around it. Uh, what we'd be looking to do is put a ornamental fence with uh, slide gates for the access off of Earl Street. As well as a slide gate for access off of the fifth street, have perimeter landscaping. Um, the rendering probably shows you a little bit better, some of the landscaping. Um, but basically meeting all the code requirements, at least as a complete streets requirements. I wanted to put this drawing up because as a part of the project, it labels it as we're here tonight for uh, secret determination, site plan approval and subdivision approval. And really the subdivision is a lot consolidation. It's, it's actually something that both properties are owned in the same deed title uh, by CEO. So um, it could actually be administered early done at the county level, but since the projects are, are, are the same uh, service, the same purpose. We, we just have decided with the client, decided that we'll just consolidate the lots into one tax parcel. So it's listed as a subdivision, but it's really a reverse subdivision.
Yeah, just to clarify, the planning commission does need to approve that process. They can merge that with or without the approval.
Um, so I think, I think we'll open it up for questions, I think.
An immediate question, I don't see on the site plan where the uh, trash would, would be broken.
Yep, um, it actually, the trash right there, Dash has in that plan. Um, there'd be a dumpster area that they could have their, their uh, refuse, recycle container that. Trash pickup, they come off of Earl Street, kind of come into the site, front load, front load in that particular spot. And that would be uh, fenced in with a screen fence of opaque nature.
You, you, you mentioned a mural right near there?
And if you go back to the rendering, there will be one on the ground side.
A, a suggestion and take it or leave it. The, I don't know if you're familiar with the parking garage on River and Federal, I think it is? The staircase there, it was a suggestion I made when we were doing some modifications to, or rent, or whatever, repair work on that. That the city do some sort of panelized system where, because we were doing, they, they were. where, because we were dealing, they were dealing with a lot of graffiti in in that stairwell. So I said, maybe encourage something where you have a replaceable system. So came up with a very simple idea, just putting tabs on a structure and being able to mount panels to it where where those panels could be replaced. You could use it for advertising events. It could be used for changing murals out. It could be used for any number of things. You get unwanted graffiti, you replace it, just food for thought.
We will look into that, but that's what we're, the objective is to have something like that, like a fiber cement, they call it a reveal panel that they could easily change it out as.
That's exactly what it, yep. Otherwise, very well thought out, thoroughly thoroughly displayed and explained. We don't have Sarah with us to comment on the exterior.
We do have another architect with us this week.
I'll see if there's any public comment first before we begin further commissioner comments. Did anyone from the public come to comment on this proposal tonight? On the Zoom meeting, please raise your hand or otherwise indicate that you want to comment.
Maybe an awning or like a stick out over the entrance wise, something that I'm just thinking about, just for rain. Not a, not a requirement, just something to consider.
I'm not sure that, oh, were you talking to them? Cause I'm not sure they heard you.
Oh, I was talking about potentially adding an awning on the main entrance. Is there one? Maybe I'm looking at the.
Usually the, there is a vestibule, so don't get buzzed into the, or so they, the front doors are always open. They get into the vestibule from there, they're buzzed in. There's a bunch of security lockdown points to protect the students. And being that there's a second order, there's another layer of security to protect all the students. So, and we do, as you, if you look at the floor plan, there is a gracious vestibule, entrance vestibule for multiple people to be in there at once. So the goal is to get them right in.
I see it. Is it exclusively going to be a daycare or will there be community events there?
Early childhood downstairs, upstairs will be, you know, you, CEO administers a bunch of different programs that, you know, they'll bring in someone to help, you know, assist with taxes at night. So they maybe have an event upstairs or, you know, bring people in, how do you file your taxes? Show them the residential grants that are available, home restore, empower, weatherization. Some of the stuff that they used to administer, some that they still do administer.
I really have no idea if this comment is one that goes anywhere, but I'm wondering if there's an opportunity for the community to memorialize things. And I know that right now we talked about there having been memorials in that area. If there, maybe there's an opportunity here to to incorporate something either into the facade or a, you know, official placard or some way to appropriately pay homage. Not sure. It's just sometimes I'm thinking about what could be done. Not, I know what should be done.
Well, I just want to say that I like the project. I like that the building is playful because especially since most of your clients will be children. I know there's not a whole lot else going on on that end of the block. So I think it's going to be a welcome addition. So good job.
There's no, no.
No, that's done in the existing facility. And and so they act as a commissary and bring it to all the other facilities that they manage.
Um, can you go to the rooftop plan? Is there any, is that just mechanical space on the roof?
Yes, yep. And right now, yeah, is it visible from all seven, we do call it out to be screened.
I don't think I have any other comments.
So are we ready for the secret determination?
I think so, unless anybody needs any further information to make their determination.
Public comment.
We already.
So I go ahead and move that we prove negative as an unlisted property, the secret determination.
Sorry, that was a little hard to hear. So, uh, commissioner, Higby moved for negative declaration on seeker.
As a, as an unlisted.
As an unlisted action, yes.
I'll second it.
Okay, going to a vote, Barbara Higby.
Yes.
Suzanne Spellin.
Yes.
Roddy Yagan.
Yes.
Anthony Moan, yes. So
okay.
The negative declaration passes.
So then, um, they said it's a consolidation, not a subdivision, but do we have to take any action on that or is that's just? I don't, okay. So I'm not, I don't know that I have any summary of the site plan. Does there any reason not to give the approval tonight, other than the fact that we don't have Sarah here with some of Andy kept?
And we certainly have the numbers that we we can make a vote one way or the other if we want to. If there's any information that we feel like we still need in order to do this, I but I agree with Roddy, but it seems pretty well thought out.
Uh, the playground in the the rendering I see is just one, is it just one kind of jungle gym? It's going to be there. And you mentioned the sun shade.
Yeah, no, there'll be more than that. They, it needs to be ADA compliant. And there's a, there'll be a division down the middle of it for two different age groups. So there'll be play equipment for one age group and then play equipment for a different age.
I know it's great.
It's all regulated.
Yeah, I know you mentioned.
Yeah, it's all regulated by OCFS.
Right.
And with.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion that we approve the site. For this sixty-eight, twenty twenty-one sixty-eight.
All right, going to a vote, Barbara Higby.
Yes.
Suzanne Spellin.
Yes.
Roddy Yagan.
Yes.
I vote yes. So the motion carried, the site plan is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you. All right, moving on to old business. Our first application is PLPC twenty twenty-one three five seventy-six Fifth Avenue. Good evening.
Hello, good evening.
Hello, Elizabeth Rodriguez from Troy Architect Project. This project before, it's the old Lancingburg High School. The change, there's just a couple of minor changes. We have added three more units to the building. Once we got more into the layout, it seemed like a couple of the units were way too big and that was easier to, no, maybe more sense to split up those extra extra units and break them up into two units. And we found another space for a third unit. We also revisited the idea of storing the garbage in the building and have opted to store it outside and we'd be using two dumpsters in an enclosure off the alley. So we had originally proposed three parking spaces back there. Our parking study done by Chazen supported adequate parking in the neighborhood and that we do not need those three spaces on the property. This allows us also to, by getting those parking spaces, allows us to have an unloading area. So if somebody is coming home with their groceries or a piece of furniture package, they can pull into that loading area off the alley, go in and bring their stuff upstairs to their unit and then come back out and park their car in the neighborhood. And it could also be used by delivery trucks, UPS, FedEx, post office could pull in there, bring their packages in and leave. So people would be assured to have a place to pull over if they want to bring things into the building. Those, those are really the only changes to the project is the reorganizing of that parking area into the garbage enclosure and a loading zone. And the three additional units and zoning has approved the three additional units and the lesser amount of.
Do you want questions now or?
Sure, why don't we go to.
The one question that someone sent in was regarding the change to be now market rate.
Speak more directly.
A market rate project now. And does that have any implications for the amount of parking that would be needed? That was a question that somebody.
It's always been market rate.
Okay. And the, and you do have the parking study which supports this, correct?
Yeah.
So we're just really evaluating whether or not the parking addition and the trash addition are acceptable.
Well, I, I don't think the planning commission is evaluating the parking. They did that. They decided that no parking is is necessary, parking provided. And no parking's required, right?
And that there was no, I was just verifying there was no change of views because somebody from the public had said.
Um, that. Correct, correct. There wasn't. And 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 really even if it was affordable versus market rate, that's not a change. That's immaterial to the planning commission's review. The, yeah, the the parking study still supports no, no, no additional parking being created. The neighborhood has enough on-street parking to support this, this project.
Yeah, so there's no change to the parking plan as previously.
There is. The previous plan where the dumpster is located outside that that used to be three parking spaces or two parking spaces back there. Um, they've since decided to move refuse outside of the building to that location, thereby eliminating those spaces, increase the unit count by three. But again, they have adequate on-street parking immediately adjacent to their site.
What sort of enclosure around the trash do you propose, if any?
We were thinking of a masonry enclosure with a tween gates on it.
But that's acceptable to me. As long as it's something.
And we have seen this, we have seen this project.
Do we have any members of the public who wanted to comment on this proposal? I'm attending by Zoom. Okay, so regarding seeker, I know we've already made a secret determination.
Yeah, I, I think because you've already made a secret determination lead agency, but this is an amendment to that application. Under the secret regulations, if there's a change in the project or substantial new information provided to you, you have two options. You can amend the prior negative declaration and incorporate in the new information, but as, but as long as you still find there will be no potential adverse impact, you can just amend the prior or you can rescind the prior and reevaluate whether or not you want to declare it to be a type one or require an environmental impact statement. I think in an instance like this, it'll be proper to have a motion to amend the prior secret negative declaration to include analysis of the elements of the amended app. And determine that the project as amended will still not have any potential adverse impact on the neighborhood.
So moved.
So I second that.
Okay, going to a vote, Barbara Higby.
Yes.
Suzanne Spellin.
Yes.
Roddy Yagan.
Yes.
Anthony Moan, yes. So the plan as amended is declared, we make a negative declaration that with the additional information, there's no adverse environmental impact that we can see. And then regarding the site plan, the changes I see are pretty minimal. So I think we can approve it as it is amended.
I move that we approve the site plan.
Second.
Going to a vote, Barbara Higby.
Yes.
Suzanne Spellin.
Yes.
Roddy Yagan. Yes.
Anthony Moan, yes. The site plan as amended is approved. Thank you. All right.
Just a quick programming note. King's Landing two, am I, I'm not skipping ahead right? That is.
No, that's the next one.
Yeah, they, the applicant notified us a few days ago that they, they wouldn't be here to present this evening. They, they waited until after, though this is, went out to the paper, which is why it's on the agenda. And then there was a and this might be a question for Andy, but there was a request from the the neighborhood group, their attorney that the application, that the planning commission essentially throw out this application as they have presented in the last few months and send them back to square one. I don't know that that's.
So does that?
Question for Andy, I don't know that.
Is that akin to just a public comment to us?
It was, essentially it was a public comment. The public comment was that the mission should, again, discontinuing the review of this application because the applicant hasn't been here for three months.
Quick, quick answer to that one. Because you did not make a secret determination, you can't take any action. And that would recoup, that would accrue denying it or dismissing it. So you can't take any action until seeker is finished and seeker is not finished. So you wouldn't be able to do that if you wanted to.
Good.
All right, good. So I understand that the, the applicant also requested to be adjourned to the December meeting, is that right?
Uh, that, that is what they requested.
Okay.
Uh, I, I, I do think the commission does have the ability to table this indefinitely if they'd like to.
If, if you can talk about that, I will.
Yeah, so all that, what that would do, it, I.
Why don't I go after?
Yeah.
I would say it was having to adjourn it every month.
Well, yeah, and so it has been, what it would have mission to do is the neighbors would have to be renoticed. It's, it's actually a little bit of a burden on the city because we have to send out those notices again. But essentially, the applicant wouldn't be on the agenda again until they decided to be heard and submit new, you know, new documentation or something along those lines. So.
Any reason we shouldn't do that? How does it make you work?
In the, in the event that they have the intent of presenting at the December seventeenth meeting, it would create unnecessary work for the city. But if they don't have the intent of presenting at the December seventeenth meeting, then we wouldn't have any work to do until they submitted something new to us. So. I, I don't have a preference one way or the other. I'm just, that, that is, that is an action you could take this evening.
I would just move that. I would just move that we table this until the December meeting.
Dan, how do you feel?
Yeah, if they, if they're coming back. If they're not, then, then we should.
Well, you, you decide now.
All right. Did they indicate one way or the other when they said?
No.
So I'm, I'm trying to give them one more time until December. If they don't show up in December, then I think we table it indefinitely.
Yeah, that's fair.
Okay, so then I move we adjourn to the December, this application, PLPC 202114 to the December 15th meeting.
Well, second.
Third.
Suzanne.
Yes.
Roddy Yagan.
Oh, yes.
Anthony Moan, yes. So the application is tabled to December 15th. Moving on to PLPC 202134, this is the bargain block. Oh, thanks. Hello again.
If Barb, as a courtesy, because you're an interested member of the public, BDC application was adjourned till December 15th.
Evening, I'm Kevin Betty, the president of First Columbia. Sorry, thank you for serving on board. I know these meetings get long, but it's a good to see a long meeting in Troy. When I first came here, our family came here, 2007, there weren't that many meetings. So we're glad to be part of Troy's rebirth. And one of the most important projects that we've ever undertaken in our firm's business is what we have before you tonight. When we think about Troy and how to really get the city to come back, what the missing piece was, was a grocery store. So we've been searching for a decade to find a grocery store and any urban redevelopment, that's usually a key indicator that the city's coming back. So we found an amazing person in Mike Savello from Bargain Grocery and he wants to expand here in Troy. We're gonna donate the whole building to him. Very hard to do that, but. Bring to the community. People like us have to figure out a way to help put him in business so he can help everyone. It's a grocery store for everyone, but it does serve the underserved and it will be a close partnership with. Community service organizations like CEO, County Social Services in our building across the street. But they serve everyone with dignity and that's what I really love about the way they operate. We're very excited to try to. Redevelop that section of Troy. We also know from experience, you can't just put that on an island. So we've making the commitment to redevelop the Flanagan Building, add on to it. We have a great use, terrific guy from Boston coming into this market to build a health fitness facility focused on rock climbing. Top-notch operator. And we also are going to rehabilitate the Flanagan Buildings. That will be. That you see to the north is a seniors housing project. I think that's one of the populations in the city that hasn't been represented very well. They'll be served by the grocery store who prepares meals. They'll deliver them to the facility. It'll tie into the Riverwalk and all the rest of the redevelopment that we've been doing. So. We're real excited and we're anxious to get going and we'd like to answer any questions you have.
Right off the bat, I'm, I'm very happy to hear that there was some thought about the connection between the senior center and the, and the grocery store. It even just made an idea pop into my mind about maybe having a, a spot for some hot food storage box or something like that for a contactless. Exchange of, you know, maybe they drop off food or something and tenants can go access it without having to ever deal with somebody or.
It really ties into everything we're doing. The success of the grocery is at the crossroads of the community. So River and Huzick is one of your main crossroads. We want to serve everyone. The more volume, the more business, the lower the prices can be, the more help they can give to everyone. So, you know, in our building here with all the office workers, a lot of them are going to, you know, exit the city that way. They can stop there, people in the neighborhood. So we've heard a lot about North Central and. In our opinion, from a real estate perspective, you've only been able to attract the lowest value tenants and whatnot. And I kind of agree. The, the grocery will act, act as an anchor like it does in the suburbs. When I first started real estate development, I built out Hanford's expansion in Capital District. And I know what they look for, the demographics and the incomes. And I realized that we forget about people just because their incomes aren't high enough. And when it comes to food, it's really. We put more proximate to those people that have lower incomes. But the grocery store will also attract other retailers. We hope to be able to bring in pharmacies, bank branches, hair salons, all the services that you see in the suburbs. Then you'll see that community rebalance itself, which is the focus. It has not. Seen any extra income and an extra investment because there's no economic reason to be there. That's why we're so focused on adding amenities, not just adding the jobs. Jobs are the first step. Then you have to add the amenities. When we were here before the hotel, four or five years ago, everybody said, oh, you know, is there enough demand? Well, there wasn't at the time, but we've now added more amenities. That's why we have the event space. That's why we have the food hall. And we have to keep on adding amenities in order to help the housing market. And you'll see in the future, a lot of the housing in that section flourish. You, you have, we counted over 2,000 units of vacant houses central. That just doesn't exist anymore because we've torn down all the buildings that decay. So we need to add those amenities. And then, so the grocery here is a catalyst and it serves everyone in the city because CDT A has terrific. Access to that site with their bus transportation, their garage being right there. The highway transportation is obviously there. Now we're going to have pedestrian connections with the walkway. So that's really what we're looking for is how do you capture? What, what can we do on this site that will be the best value for the city going forward? And I can't really think of something better to do than put a grocery store there and redevelop that block, new landscaping, new streetscape. We want everyone to be served with dignity that comes into this section of town. And we want to be proud of Troy and proud of what we've developed there. So that's really what we're trying to accomplish. And again, we're donating the building. We're trying to work hard using our experience in order to figure out. How to do something that's very challenging.
Looking at the, for parking, I don't mean to just, everything you're saying fits in exactly with how I, I hope to see the city grow and, and how to, how to improve the development. The, so just kind of tailoring my comments more towards the specifics of, of anything that I see in the senior housing where the parking lot is.
Right up here.
Yep. Is there any way to potentially get the drop off for, for elderly people a little closer to the entrance of the building?
Well, the drop off is going to hopefully be up on River Street and the, the back is for. You know, individual parking and access into the building. So there'll be key access. It's more individuals parking their car. But yeah, we can look at, if there's any, you know, enhancements we can do, we certainly are willing to do that.
And then also I'd add that these renderings are a massive improvement in your submission over the last one. And the view of the Rock Gym from the, it's looking from the west towards the east. That you can see on the corner, the building, the glass atrium or glass wall that goes up. Any, any reason why that doesn't wrap a little further around the corner towards, on the south facade?
Yep, because we have a future idea that I wasn't willing to do. So that. This view, you're standing underneath the Huzick Street Bridge and the bridges, the abutment for the bridge is close to that wall.
Close to which wall?
Close to the, the sidewall of the, of the Rock Gym is.
Okay.
So there's maybe 20 feet difference there. What we'd like to do is go to DOT and submit a plan to rehab that upper parking lot that we have. Be able to have festivals there. We'd like to be able to shine movies or events on the side of that wall. And, and I, our tech changes. And I didn't. Necessarily want to make that public because I haven't figured it out with DOT yet, but.
Creative.
Yeah. And so we made that banding, we may move to wherever a screen would be. But when we were, you know, we were all down underneath the bridge saying, how can we activate this space? We have this great riverwalk that's going to come there. We have Huzick Street coming down. We have an active bus stop right there. How can we activate this parking lot? When the office workers leave and, you know, we have a tremendous asset right there and it's just been beautified by the painting and they're doing lighting. And we thought that would be a great. Addition there to be able to rain or shine underneath. It's a, it's a pretty big canopy that we have. And it's very high, so it doesn't feel like you're under the bridge, but it's going to shelter you from the elements. It'd be a great place to do movies or some kind of community and use that wall.
Love the idea. The, on the rendering, sorry monopolizing the floor, the rendering of the senior center, it's the last page of the submission. My eyes are always on any building along the river. And what, what is going to be used, what the rooftop space is going to be used for. I really think that the city would benefit from a lot more rooftop usage. Especially along waterfront, especially if you have elderly community right there that could be getting some sun, enjoying the water. Not sure if you guys had considered any kind of occupiable space or, or recreational or usable space on the roof there.
Yep, we, we debated that and code wise, you're limited to, you have a limited occupancy on the roof from an exit. And you do have a emergency E R S problem when you have limited people up there. We thought that on the lower roof, along the. Back area, we'd be able to create enough of an engagement and it's closer to the walkway in the back. And we couldn't really look at it. From a, if we have a senior population, having even 49 elderly people on the roof and having them get, get off there in event of a thunderstorm, we're a little hesitant to embrace that.
I've got a question about the, the penthouse floor. On the renderings, you've got trees or bushes or something. What is that floor? Is that the mechanicals or?
It would be a little bit of patio space from, those are the. Those are the, right, so.
Dressed up with some potted plants and stuff like that. But is the floor space inside usable or is that?
Yep. So I don't know if you've been upstairs to the ninth floor, but we have that nice outdoor patio and we're trying to do this.
And my other question is the solar panels, are they, will be visible from the street?
Well, Jacques Drum facing the wrong way, so they'll be facing south. We're, we're gonna, in the future, all the properties are going to end up being electric in the future. So we're going to make them adaptable from right now. Right now, the technologies aren't there to do it fully. So we're going to have some gas, fire, heat pumps in that building, but eventually it's going to transform. I think when solar panels reach a, a better transmission rate. So. And that was our debate too with using the roof. We think we're going to need it for solar power in the future.
Also wanted to say this one is much better than the other one. Thank you.
You know, it's an ambitious project, but I really think it's going to be the gateway to transforming. The, the development that's happened downtown. And when I turn around in this building and you look that way, I, we haven't done enough. To pay attention to how to transform that neighborhood. And I think this is it. I don't know for sure, but I think in our gut from doing this for a long time. Doing grocery, adding fitness, making it more active, engaging underneath the, the Huzick Street Bridge, bringing people together. We're really excited. I think this is going to be one of our transformational projects that we've been involved in and really excited. And we are in, in a hurry. I have a lot of things to pull to get all this going. It's very complex and. You know, but certainly we want to be able to do good development, good planning. That makes good projects.
I think the project is at a point where it's, it's demonstrated how it's tying into the, to the surrounding area. I think that the, the facade work and architectural elements of it have been developed in, in a way that we've kind of asked to see. I, I'm, I'm a lot more comfortable with this project now. What about the top floor of the senior center? It looks almost like a penthouse up there.
It, it's just a different treatment. So there'll be some glass and panel rather than brick and setting it back. I feel that gives it a better cap than just having a rectangle type of building. I think, you know, that helped.
So, so it's still more just units, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Question on, on our staff recommendation. It says conditionally based on final technical review. What, what would be in the final technical review?
Well, if there's no further commissioner comments or questions. Comments. Are there any members of the public who came to speak about this proposal tonight?
Hello, my name's Marissa Peck and I work at Capital Roots at 594 River Street in Troy. And it's lovely to see some more streetscaping to the project as well as some considerations for a storm runner runoff, sort of enhancements to the design. We've been in the neighborhood since 2014 and have developed relationships with a lot of the residents. That neighborhood is very residential, even though it's tucked between two pretty busy streets. And I think one thing I'd like to draw your attention to is the logistics for the delivery of the food and the transportation. Right now, I believe the loading dock is planned to be off of the alleyway. And we also use part of that alley, alleyway at 594 River Street, but never with nothing larger than a pickup truck. It's used to just load lawnmowers on our place, on our property, just because the alley is so small. And so to have the alley raid off of Vanderhyden. Street be a place that receives orders, daily deliveries, it says in the application. From probably very large tractor trailers seems like potentially a problem for the nature of that street, which is very narrow. The street is also pinched on both ends. So on the sixth half side, it's basically a one-way street, even though it's technically a two-way because of all of the double parking. From the outpatient facility that's there. And then on the River Street side, that is probably the busiest crosswalk in that neighborhood because of folks who are looking. And then on the River Street side, that is probably the busiest crosswalk in that neighborhood because of folks who are looking to be able to go as us. So I drive these streets every day, often in the Veggie Mobile, which is like a 16-foot box truck. And I would never, I try to avoid driving on Vanderheiden as often as possible, even in a personal vehicle because of how narrow that street is and really the residential nature of that street. But I certainly, my staff is instructed to not use that with our larger vehicles. And we're not even driving something that is the size of a tractor trailer. So that is a part of the plan that I would just ask for you all to pay attention to. Especially if the grocery is planning to serve such a high volume of folks with food coming in daily, being unloaded. What happens if there's multiple vehicles waiting and there's a backlog? We have a two bay dock at our facility and often find traffic jam issues for loading and unloading. But we have a parking lot that accommodates those vehicles as they're waiting to keep traffic congestion from affecting River Street. So I think that's something to seriously consider and look at. Also as a pedestrian in this neighborhood, the, it's quite an incline as you come up. So I think that that's also like the elevation change on that street as trucks are backing in and out could cause some challenges in safety risks to pedestrians, to other cars and to the drivers of the delivery vehicles themselves. So yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just wanted to clarify. Thank you for your comments and thank you for Capital Roots is a great organization. The alleyway behind the building is not passable. There's actually a difference in grade elevation. So you can't even drive through the alley. And Bargain Grocery is a very sophisticated operator. They'll run two trucks a day. They'll fill it up in the morning. We have plenty of storage space in the building. We have over 20,000 square feet. So they'll be able to load enough product in there. There won't be a lot of truck traffic. And then Vanderheiden gets them right up back on the highway.
What were you saying about two a day? Two trucks a day, what?
They'll have two tractor trailer trucks, trucks a day to load the facility. It's not going to be trucks all day long. It's a very, it's a very sophisticated delivery system that they have. They're very organized. They have what product they need. They're not sending random trucks here and there. It's very systematic how they supply the store.
The parking lot, it's a shared parking lot there, correct?
Which parking lot?
The south of the grocery store, proposed grocery.
No, that's our parking.
Says existing.
Yep. So we have a lot to the north. We have a lot to the south and that connects, that part of the alley connects underneath the bridge, which we have that, all that parking too. So we have considerable amount of parking spaces to serve the volume of customers that we think are going to be there.
What is the number of required spaces? Do we know for that? And do you know what? All good. Must be next. What is the number of required spaces for that grocery, for a proposed grocery store?
I, I believe we greatly exceeded and peak hour for grocery would be off, peak hour for office. We have a parking vicinity. So we, and, and that's one of the keys. We're trying to make the city back into mixed use and share that parking asset. And that's one of the reasons why this is a terrific location for the market is because not only do we have the access from the highways, but we have plenty of parking for the guests.
Code requires two per thousand square feet. So they need 40.
Forty is what it says on the application. For the grocery.
I only asked the question because I'm wondering if there's any way to sacrifice parking there to bring loading towards that side of the building.
I, I think it makes a lot of sense. We're using the grade to, to handle that and that entire gray area. So we own property on the other side of the alley as well. So we have quite enough circulating area for the loading docks. We have two doors. And, and, you know, from an operational standpoint, we think it works out very well. It's shielded from the entrance by where we put in loading dock. And this building is, is actually a terrific building. So one of the gems of Troy left over from the collar days. Terrific, heavy timber and brick structure, similar to across the street in the Flanagan building. In very good condition, structurally very sound. It had printing equipment in it, has a very high floor load capacity. And we're going to do a historic renovation of that property. So from a historic standpoint, they want to keep the, the west facade facing River Street intact as historic as possible. And that's why adding the addition for the entrance on the north side is in keeping with what the US Parks wants us to do from a historic standpoint. It also keeps all those windows open. So in this, this is going to be like a, a great little, like Whole Foods downtown. That has great old windows, a lot of light coming in. All the produce will be along the front windowed area. There's windows along the south wall on that parking lot on the right-hand side. So, you know, a lot of the grocery stores, you don't have any light inside except for when you're going out. This is going to have a not, a lot of natural light coming in. Terrific layout. We work with them extensively on the layout. Full slate of groceries, not just one thing, but everything you need. Mike doesn't believe in, in selling junk food. He thinks one of the problems, especially in these poorer neighborhoods is all they have access to is unhealthy food. So it's healthy produce, it's healthy meats and proteins. It's, I mean, the product that he has is just like you would find in Whole Foods. A lot of it gets supplied through that organization. So I'm, like I said, I'm really excited and I think, I mean, you can find little problems with every single project. But when you look at the big picture and we're able to deliver into this community that everyone needs, I, I just think let's figure out how to get, get past whatever, you know, concerns we have.
Were there any other members of the public who wanted to comment on this application tonight? Either here or on the Zoom meeting. I see a hand raised.
Yes, Amy Klein, if you'd like to share your comment, go right ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. This is Amy Klein. I'm CEO at Capital Roots and I've, I'm sorry, I couldn't be there in person today. But, you know, we have spoken the last couple of meetings and obviously I'm not going to speak again about why we don't feel like the grocery is a good project. But I do have, it's not a Whole Foods project. And just to reiterate that what the project is offering is not as it's being presented. But I do have grave concerns about the loading dock area and the truck traffic. And I think it is the responsibility of the planning board to look at that and be concerned about a residential neighborhood where whether it's one time a day or more than one time a day, a tractor trailer is going to be backing up into an alleyway, which by the way, is our property, is a community garden on that alleyway, is so heavily trafficked. People are walking across that street already and there is not enough parking. There is not enough mobilization that exists right now. And whether or not this is a good amenity, whether it's a pretty building, whether or not this should be pushed through the planning board to be properly vetted and it needs all the components that is good for the residential community that it is being embedded in. And if the truck issues are not addressed, then it will not be. And they have not been addressed. I raised them at last month's planning board meeting and literally nothing was done to remediate those issues and they really need to be looked at. Thank you.
Like to respond to that quickly. Any of you want to come to Utica and see the store? It's terrific. Ronnie was here, it got too late for her. She drove out to see it for herself. And I think any of you would like to welcome me to come out and take a look. And, you know, I appreciate Amy and all that she does in her organization. But what you just heard is a definition of NIMBY.
I see that Ronnie has a kind of hand up.
Comment. You know, I'm a neighbor on River Street for my business and I'm a neighbor in the Fulton Grand residential area. And I'm a neighbor in the Lansingburg area residential and commercial. And for me, having a place to do my groceries, even if it's not my major groceries, is very important to me. It's, I went to Utica to see Mike and the Bargain Grocery and I was very impressed with their business model, with the products they sell and with the whole effect of what they, they do. And I'm entirely in favor and I support this. All the details, the, the parking, the, the, the delivery trucks will be worked out on alleyways that are not being used well anyway. I think behind my building in Husick and Hutton, that could use a lot of help, quite frankly. And is a, is a thoroughfare for the city of Troy. So I, I want to express my support for this and, and it's people like First Columbia who have helped the expansion of Troy into that northern neighborhood of the downtown. And we have a big opportunity here. So I want you to know that I support this and I thank you for hearing.
Thank you. Barb, you wanted to say something?
Hi, Barb Nelson from TAP. This is the first time I'm seeing this and, and so I stayed so I, so that I could see it. And I'm pleased to see that this is concept review. I would say I thoroughly endorse the concept. I, I think it's a, such a massive under to play planner for a minute and look at that site plan. The extent of area, and this is where I absolutely agree with Amy and, and her employee. That gray area with no pedestrian sidewalk, that's essentially a, I don't know, 300 foot drive, driveway apron cut. Yeah. So certainly something could be done to extend the concrete sidewalk up, extend streets, trees up. You don't need, you know, it just up to like the first axle of the truck, right? Up a little, right about there. You could still have curb, guideposts, you know, guide rails, whatever you need to keep the truck going, you know, angling south. But where Dash is showing us that arrow, that could all be sidewalk, raised curb, street trees, it really, that's just too broad an area to let in the corner and say, oh shoot, there's no sidewalk here. Oh, now I have to cross Vanderheiden. Oh, oh, there's a truck coming around from the side. And so I absolutely agree. And, and yeah, just, if this is concept, the engineers can figure this out and track the, the pathway of the truck and whatever is not needed for that, for those trucks can be better, better dealt with for pedestrian safety. Thanks.
I think I agree with that and we can definitely put the sidewalk up there and get some more landscaping or shielding to the side of that. I think that's a very good idea.
Yes.
Hi, Elizabeth Rodriguez from TAP again. I'm just curious as to the height of the senior housing compared to the surrounding warehouses. It looks a little bit hulking from rendering. I do like the design of the facade. It's, it's broken up nicely. It just looks really tall compared to the Flanagan Square building. So wondering how tall it is compared to that.
Yeah, that stretch of river actually has very hulking buildings. So Flanagan, it's about the same height of Flanagan. Flanagan may be a little bit higher to the south and then to the north. You have McGilliguts Mechanical Contractor, it's a little brownstone. But right next to that is the old Meridian's building, which just got renovated into the apartments. That is much taller than this. And it kind of brings back the scale of what was along the river previously. I don't know if you guys saw it, like downstairs in the, the bathroom hallway, there's a, there's an old photo we put on the wall that has all the old buildings. And because the waterfront, important to there, you had these big factory buildings along the river. And our thinking was trying to keep it in scale with that rather than building a lower scale building. So we actually kind of want to keep that rhythm along that section of River Street. So I think it ties in nicely with the heights of those buildings.
Another idea about the loading dock would be potentially like a barrier wall I've seen in some loading docks.
Yeah.
Might, might be just from both a safety and sound standpoint, just kind of containing it.
Right. So I think Barbara's comment is good. And I was thinking as she's talking, I don't know what's better. Landscaping, get some greenery or putting in some type of wall. I've seen it done both ways. And we really should make a slip for that truck to nest into rather than have, be exposed on the side. So if you would, I mean, we'd like to keep on working on all this. We'd like to get through the planning process, you know, it's going to be multi-adjacent, which we have been working closely with the city throughout everything. We'd like to incorporate ideas like that. Like I said, with the, the movie screen, we're thinking how to make things better all the time. So as long as, you know, from the seeker stuff and all the, you know, neg deck things, if we can get that out of the way and keep on working together to make these projects as, but as we can, we're, we're open to do that.
So comment to the fellow commissioners would be, it, it seems the, the project is at a point where it could move forward with exactly as the staff recommendation says, with some conditions on there for maybe what, what seems to be the last bit of hesitancy or, or concern about around the project. The main thing I'm hearing is the loading dock. So there could be a condition in the technical review that pedestrian safety improvements are made and beacons or flashing signs are implemented and approved by city staff. It's kind of where I'm at with it.
I think those might be, I mean, those are improvements that we might like to see before we consider whether they're, they're acceptable to us. It does sound like we probably have the information that we need for secret purposes if we wanted to make a determination there. I, I personally feel comfortable with that. And of course, people can disagree. I mean, if people feel like they have enough information to approve the site plan as it is. But what I hear the applicant saying is that they're planning to come back and show us what those improvements would look like for the pedestrian infrastructure on Vanderheiden. Personally, I'd like to see them. I don't know what, what other people feel like.
I think they're saying they wanted to move through it and.
Well, I think we should do whatever.
Which, well, you didn't hear which.
Yeah, I feel like we have enough information in front of us now to move forward with a secret review. But when it comes to the pedestrian improvements on Vanderheiden, those might be something that we might like to actually see before we give out our approval.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I think we should do whatever we can to keep it moving forward and, um, you know, get all those details and later date.
Sounds like a motion.
I was gonna say that I, I'll make a motion on the seeker that we issue a negative. Do we have to declare, we've already declared this hopefully? Okay, just checking. Yeah, I'll make the motion that we issue a negative declaration.
I'll second that. Going to a vote, Barbara Higby. Suzanne Spellen.
Yes.
Rody Jagan.
Yes.
Anthony Moan, yes. Motion carries. Is the plan, we want to see improvements along the lines that we discussed.
Can, can I ask on, on the staff notes? Are we, do we have what we need now on the parking layouts, ADA compliance? But, you know, the, this, have we got those things?
I, I believe that those unresolved comments can be resolved in the technical review and further final, absolutely final drawings. I, I don't believe that those are needed for the overall site plan approval of the project.
What I don't want to happen is for us to lose out on us as a city on, on a project like this if, if there's funding considerations.
I think we're ready to, to make the, the, this move forward with the stipulations. And that they're not like out of control stipulations.
Do you want to make a motion? Okay, I'll, I'll make a motion then that we approve the, the site plan. With the condition, uh, with the condition of final technical review and approval of final exterior architectural materials by city staff, including the, including the pedestrian safety improvements surrounding the loading dock.
I second.
All right, going to a vote, Barbara Higby.
Yes.
Suzanne Spellen.
Yes.
Rody Jagan.
Yes.
And Anthony Moan, I vote yes. So the site plan is approved, subject to the stipulations that we have. Final technical review, uh, architectural materials to be submitted to the city engineer as well as detail on the pedestrian improvements on Vanderheiden. Is there anything else in those conditions?
That was verbatim.
All right.
Great, thank you.
Great. All right, last item on the agenda. And this is one that I am not going to be articulating in as I'm recused. So.
Just, just counting here, that's, that's three left. Unanimous decisions.
Yeah, unanimous decisions only, everyone. Otherwise.
Fairly well, bye bye.
Otherwise, nothing's gonna happen.
December 15.
Good, thank you.
Hold it tight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ah, thank you. They're coming for your job, Dash.
Dash, were you able to get that?
Yes.
Sharing my screen now.
Great, thanks Dash. Well, thank you, thank you, everyone. Roger Keating from the Chasing Companies. I know it's been a long night, so I'll try to keep this as brief as we can for you. We were before the board, uh, last, last month. And since then, we've gone to the zoning board to give them an update on the project as it related to our parking variance. We've, we, um, we'll be back before them for a vote. But based upon that last meeting, um, they were, um, relatively positive as it relates to, in support of that.
Yeah, and, and I would just add, I attended the meeting. Um, they were prepared to take action on the application for the parking variance. But I, I told them they couldn't because you're a secret lead agency and you still need to make a secret determination. But every indication from the conversation that meeting, they're in favor of parking variance and were granted, once secret is, uh, resolved.
And then we did go to historic as well, just to give them a, another look at the building since some things have changed on there. I believe the only comment that we got out of the, out of the historic review was there was a little bit of a comment on some of the windows. Speak to that or, um, afterwards here. But, but generally speaking, that's where we've been with the, with the project since last time. I'll just do a quick recap here. The project is located in the R5 residential high density district. So 4.27 acre piece of property currently rent. Dash, you want to go to the next slide for me real quick, just for the existing additions? We've got, uh, the existing Taylor 1 and 2 buildings. There are nine, nine story buildings with 143 apartments that are, that exist on the site today with 34 parking spaces to make way for the project. Those buildings will be demolished. Um, and then a new, a, a new building will be proposed as part of that. Want to go to the next one? Just as a, some, some relationships to where everything lives. Once again, in the phase one, uh, the Taylor building is located on the easterly side of the River Street. You can see here where the bridge is, where the, the, the on and off ramps are and how the, the project sites would be existing Taylor, uh, buildings. Go to the next slide here for me. Thank you. Just to hit on the site plan really quick, the black and white version of this. The parking for the project, we have 38 proposed. So again, this will be a seven story building with 141 apartments. So two stories shorter than the nine stories that are out there. The 38 parking spaces are going to be located behind the building with, some of those parking spaces are actually covered underneath the, the building canopy. So I just wanted to point that out here on the site plan. I don't think I mentioned that. Go around. So all of our parking is in the rear off of First Street Alley with a portion of the parking and where some of the bicycle storage and such is, is all located underneath the building cover there. Next slide.
Could I pause you there actually? About the parking. The only thing that just stuck out to me is slightly odd. Why is all of the traffic going through the alley versus one of? I guess, is that, yeah, that's probably the only place to access it from. Maybe I answered my own question.
Okay, so First Street Alley, uh, actually, you can't, you can't continue to the south on First Street. Because when you go down Ferry Street, there's actually a pretty high retaining wall and such there. So the, the, the site access to the parking is been through the rear of the property, even under existing conditions today. River Street with the ramp and everything set well off of there. So there's not really any access. River Street sits up pretty high. And then obviously, we just have a small amount of furniture there. So that's where it all stems from. Next slide, so just want to hit on some of the landscaping components here. We just bullet pointed a few of the items throughout. The key is, is, um, you know, the building sets back from River Street, but it's up on Congress Street. So, um, consistent with the comprehensive plan, the building frontage along Congress Street will be right up along the property line. Along River Street, we've created this really nice, um, this buffer between the building and River Street. Accomplishes two goals. One, it provides amenity space for the, the tenants and the public as well as some access that's offset from River Street a little bit. Also with that, it allows for the future planning of River Street. When the Congress Street Bridge and the ramps ultimately get removed, we'll be able to reconnect the north and the south side of River Street. And by us offsetting the building back, it'll help afford some flexibility in how that River Street grading and such will take place in the future. Um, and, yep, that's fine. The next slide, no, that's my next slide, still hits on, hits in on some of the things that we were, we were talking about. Sorry, I'm trying to move quicker. The seating areas and stuff, Aaron, are all up front along the, along the streetscape that we've created here, um, as well as some areas for benches, tables and chairs. And so we've also incorporated some natural play components to the project along the Ferry Street side of things and in, in front, along River Street as well. Next slide. Um, and then again, just what that means to the project is just basically helping bring people, providing them, bring people to the street, have, have people have a place for them to gather and give them some outdoor amenity space outside of what's within the building. Next slide. And I'll let Rem speak to this a little bit. But at the last meeting, there was a lot of discussion about, is there some way that we can potentially engage the rooftop into the project? And, um, so Rem will be able to speak to a little bit of taking that into consideration. And he's worked up a, a plan to share with you this evening about what we could do for the rooftop. So Rem.
Hi, good evening. My name is Rem Garabee Terune. I'm from Dattner Architects.
Can you pull the mic up a little? Thanks.
Sure.
Thank you.
My name's Rem. I'm, I'm from Dattner Architects. And as Roger was saying, uh, we got comments not only from, from you guys and from the public here, but also from the community, uh, Taylor houses existing that more outdoor space would be beneficial to the project. So, uh, we've added this terrace space on the roof. It's a very large flat roof. So it was to both provide some additional amenity space to the tenants and also take better advantage of that space. So we are still showing, there's a significant number of mechanical units on the roof. But we were able to carve out an area of about 2,500 square feet that we should have nice river views and views around the city from this vantage point. We're also still showing on the southern, you know, three quarters of the roof, possible solar array. That's not necessarily in the program as TBD, but potentially this terrace space could increase in, in size if that doesn't get implemented. Uh, can you go to the next slide? And there was also some questions about what the, a little more information on the landscape design was requested. So we brought a couple of slides, the landscape, uh, landscape architect provided just to show some of the materials here. So I think, you know, Roger touched on what the components really are in terms of seating and bouldering and children's play space. But here you get an idea of some of the materiality that will be proposed with, you know, some cast, cast in place paving, some bouldering and the, you know, rubberized surface for the play area for children as well as, of course, planting and grass, grassed area. Next slide, please. And this just shows some of the planting. So obviously, we want to have a variety, bring color and, um, and creating a space around the river elevation and then running around the north and south sides of the project. The roof plan that we showed earlier, also currently, we're just showing some tables and chairs, but we'll have some planting up there as well. Uh, next slide, please. And then also related to the landscaping, we added these sections from the, the landscape architect's drawings to give you a better idea of grading and the relationship to the street. So you can see at the top left, that's the Congress Street elevation. And as, as Roger was saying, we're keeping the building close to the property line there to really, you know, create that urban, uh, street wall. You can see, it, it looks like it's a few feet back from the property line, but in reality, on the site plan, because of the shape of the property, the building, you know, actually touches the two corners. So it's really quite close to the sidewalk. And then you can see on the river, the River Street elevation or sections, we have that, that wide berth given from the roadway to the building that creates that space for, for activity and, and movement. You know, we're together when the, the bridges, uh, is modified in the future. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, and again, um, we talked about this a little bit last time, but the, the building itself, our design is really inspired by a lot of the historical buildings in the neighborhood, particularly Long River Street, both north and south of the project. That, the brick facade, the, the texture of those older industrial buildings, the bays. That's really, you see that in the elevations of our design. So if you go to the next slide. Oh, actually, before I talk about, um, our, our envelope design concept, there was also a question of the scale of the building. So we added this slide and the next slide. Here you can see, uh, I think it's 155 River Street to the right. That's the existing building immediately kitty corner or diagonally opposite proposed building to the northwest. So you can see it's really at that corner bay of the, the existing building. It's pretty much the height as the building. And you can see in that building, again, that those industrial bays, the brick materiality, that we're really trying to take cues from in our building. The, the elevation to the left is our building, but it's the north elevation, facing Congress Street. Uh, next slide, please. And here, uh, similar comparison, but showing some of the other buildings along River Street. So the top left is our proposed building. The one immediately to the right of it is that same 155 River Street. And then a few other buildings you can see for scale and concept. Uh, next slide, please. And here the elevations, I'm sorry, it's a little dark on the screen. The prints are maybe a little clearer. But the, the red brick really is, you know, what was the inspiration from all those other buildings that we used and the texture that moves in and out. So there's a play in the depth of the piers, um, the bays that are either two or three windows wide. And then spanning multiple floors, which we've incorporated, uh, is also a contemporary move that we do to kind of break up the, the height of the building. So the, the palette of the project includes two tones of brick. So it's substantially the red brick. But we do have at the base, some dark gray brick at the northern third of the building. And then on the rear of the building, there's some, some gray brick. We have two tones of metal panel. So on the, if you're looking at the top elevation, the longer one, you can see a strip of gray running from bottom to top of the building. That's right above the main entrance to the, for the residence. So that would be a light gray metal panel running up to the top and then spanning across. And then a darker gray panel that is between pairs of windows that create those groupings. The other materials that we're proposing are EFS, which in this, on that top elevation, you can see on the right half at the top two floors. So that's at the setback along River Street. It would be two tones of, of an EFS, which is like, uh, finish, a light gray and a dark gray, or similar to the metal panel that we're using elsewhere. And then if you, uh, next slide. Wrapping around to the, the back of the building. So this is facing the alley at the northern, uh, you know, two bays of the building, the brick wraps. And then where it steps back in at the parking, that's where we have EFS running all the way around the, uh, the east side of the building.
Can you talk a little bit more about your choice to switch to EFS there? Is it simply a cost choice? Is it?
No, it's actually, I mean, it, it does, obviously, cost helps. EFS is a cheaper material to work with. But what we're trying to do is also break, break down the mass of the building. So it's, it's also a volumetric thing. So that EFS that runs along that back end of the building, you can see then in the bottom left elevation that it wraps around into the setback that goes along River Street. So we tried to kind of like break the volume into two and use different materials to express that change. And here is just a sort of summary image of those materials. Again, it's not great on the screen, but you can see the light and dark gray metal panels and then the light and dark gray EFS materials that are sort of, uh, matching those metal panels and then the brick samples below. And I think we mentioned last time as well, the, the sample of the brick on this, the red brick, that's not necessarily the exact one we're going to use. This is showing a blend where it's a bit of an orange and a brownish kind of blend. That's the intention right now, but it might go to, uh, you know, a richer red or a simpler red. We're still sort of studying that. Uh, next slide. This is just the materials again. Next slide. And then this is a section similar to those small landscaping sections we showed earlier, but this shows the whole with, of River Street. So this is looking south, if you're at the north end of the building. And you can see that wide berth for the landscaping we're providing, which will, um, you know, gives it a nice space between that existing, um, on-ramp to the, to the brick. Uh, and then in the future, again, once, uh, River Street is stitched back to the, to its, you know, southern portion, it'll have that nice walk that will take you by the, the project and relate to the future phases of the project, which are on the. And relate to the future phases of the project, which are on the southwest side, which is to the right hand side of this section. Next. And this, this is just the rendering that we had at the beginning, but you can see here again, that, that texture of the facade that we're trying to create. And, you know, reference some of those historical buildings. And that's it.
With that, I guess we'll turn it back over to you for any other questions or comments. We do have a seeker component that is still open. As it is my understanding that we make a decision as to whether or not the seeker gets amended or rescinded. Correct, Andy? I'm correct. Not speaking out of term here. So that is something that, you know, is needs to be considered as part of the, the project here as we, as we advance forward. But I'd be happy to try to answer any questions, comments that you guys might have at this time.
Either of you want to kick off comments, questions?
We need a Oh, yeah. So drawing straws or, or what?
I'll be chair. Sure.
There you go.
Do, do I have to make a motion to do that or?
No.
Okay.
No.
Just making sure. Great chair.
Nice.
So should we, should we start up with some comments and then go to public?
Correct. We usually start where we have thus far. So, um, quick comments I had. I, I think I asked this, it may have been on your project last, last month, may have been another one. Windows in the, can you dash go to the views where we show the similar buildings? It was like maybe eight, eight pages before the end. Something like that. Sure. That's a good one. A common, a common thing I see, and I probably know the answer to this, are arched windows in every building around there. Any chance to incorporate that or is that extremely cost prohibitive? Is there?
Well, it is quite cost prohibitive generally. You know, you can, you can do rectangular windows with a brick arch in front of it and spandrel above to close out, to get basically a faux arched window. But I think what the reason we didn't look at that in this project is that, you know, while we are referencing and taking a lot of cues from these historical buildings. We're still trying to maintain a more contemporary interpretation of that concept. You know, rooms, and that was kind of the intention, right? And the materiality with the darker gray brick that we're using and the gray metal panel finishes is really to try and meld those two concepts together. I don't know where we would do if we were to incorporate arched window tops. I'm not sure where would fit in nicely with the concept because we also have, you know, we have the single story base and we have the four story band and then the two story kind of capital to the building. I suppose we could, we could work it into the top capital, but with the metal panels, I think it might be a little out of place conceptually.
Yeah, I think if, if you were to do it, the top row before you get to the EFS or to the metal paneling would be where it would be, maybe makes sense. West corner that's tucked up towards the current bridge on ramp. Kind of gets cut off in some of the views. I didn't know if there was any plan for that, like on the
It's, I think if you go to the next slide, it's in the bottom left. Yeah, it's a little dark. But that's that corner that you see the bottom left.
Like it's better shown even in the plan view.
Yeah, for instance. I think page three, right down in here, we
Right down in, in this corner here. I didn't know if you had any plans there or is that just going to be left as it is?
Oh, I think that's beyond the property line. So I don't think that's within our scope. I think you can see like what, what's sort of highlighted in the landscaping.
The property.
The edge of the property line.
Okay. Okay. So then can I get some clarification on why we have to reaffirm the declaration?
They're, they're proposing a substantial change to the project specifically related to the height. So whenever there is a substantial change to a project, that was the subject of a prior negative declaration. The secret regs give you basically two opportunities, two options. One to review, analyze the changes and then amend the previous negative declaration to incorporate those changes. And so long as you determine that they will not have a significant environmental impact, then you can amend the declaration and move forward. But if you think the change is so substantial that gives the rise that there is the possibility for a moderate to large potential adverse environmental impact. Then I would recommend that you rescind the negative declaration, consider issuing a positive declaration and requiring an environmental impact statement.
So last meeting, did we, did we make any?
You, you didn't. You didn't make a decision. I mean, that's what Roger had referenced. It came over to this evening. I explained it briefly, but you took no action. I think you were going to think about it. And now if you're in a position this evening, you can, you know, choose one of those course.
But we did not do a negative.
You did. When you originally approved.
Oh, it's five stories.
Yes, yes, yes. They're back here for an amendment.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
I voice my comments. Either of you have comments?
I have a comment about the parking. Is there any kind of lighting back there or security or, or anything going on back there on the alley?
Sure. Yes, there, there is lighting in the back. There's, there's pole lights on the site plan right there. They're a little hard to see, but there's, there's two pole lights along the, the parking itself. And then there's like that landscape island in the middle there. Those were two of the lights are located. There you go. And then there's also some building mounted lights along that side as well. In the alley, there's a, there's a pretty significant street light. Doesn't show up on that plan, but if you've been, if you've ever been down there in the evening. I've taken lighting levels in the alley. There's a really bright light and street light at the corner as well.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
I have a couple of I have a couple of concerns.
You're on.
Okay. I have a couple of concerns and they are the sort of the big major concerns, not all the things around the edges. And that is back to the issue of the seven stories. And my concern has to do with the size of this first building. The fact that it is on Congress Street, a seven story part of it is on Congress Street. And, and, and I'm referring to the old site. Which isn't really this building, but my understanding is that this, this is the corner of Congress and River. And the seven story is right flat, as you say, right up against the sidewalk and seven stories right up. Okay. So that, that's my, my concern about the height. If it was the opposite and you had, is this part over here actually six stories? Or is it just shorter?
No, it's also seven stories. It's just setback from the street.
Okay. And I'm not designing your building for you under any circumstances. I love, I love the look of the building. When it was five stars, really ready to vote. So I have that problem. And then I, the other problem I have has to do with not understanding the site plan. It seems to me that what you've come back with is putting too many units in the first building, which I understand you've been pressed to do. This isn't like, you're not sitting here saying, oh, this is better than when it was five. You're saying you have to do this for some reasons. I'm not sure I understand because the other was better. So I'm going to want you to explain why this has to be so big. And also how the, the parking works and how the, the, the open space works. So that we're not in fact finding negative impacts on this first building. And the other part of it is what, what about the rest of the site? If you put all this into this site. Then I, and I don't know that you know the whole, all the answers here, but it just seems like it's so front loaded on Congress Street. And thankfully the rest of this is over here. So it's not right up against Sage. But I, I don't really understand that.
So I guess a couple of things. One is the, the comment about the seven story wrapping up on Congress Street. And, you know, why does it need to be tall on that? That street frontage. One of the things about the site plan is that we really need the entrance to this building to be far away from the on ramp to the bridge, right? We want it to be further north toward that corner.
Yeah.
And so the elevators have to carry up over there. So we really need, we can't have a lower volume at that corner. And because it's an L shaped building, that is our inside corner. So that's where the elevator core has to be and where the stair wants to be. That really drives the volume being at that location. In terms of, you know, the volume of this building, why is it higher here? And, you know, could it be on the western sites or distributed more in the western sites? Those I think will be really treated separately, you know, separate financing structure and which is not resolved yet, because you were suggesting. But I think there is a benefit that if there's a higher street frontage here, it could maintain views for the tenants of this building. Potentially, even if there's a similarly, similar height building on those western sites, it might be at a lower grade. So there might be some benefit in that, in that sense in the future buildings. I'm not sure what the question about the parking logistics was. It was a concern, you're concerned about how it's used?
Forty or 50 apartments to this building and have you, is that going to cause any additional parking impact to the college and to the neighborhood? And there are people here that will be asking those questions.
Understood. I mean, I think the the, it is a limited footprint site. So it was difficult to try and incorporate more parking into this site. But I do think the master plan does intend to treat the phases two and three and, and consider parking for the whole in the future. So it is, there's 38 spots here. There'll be additional spots across the way. And the entire site is going to be studied holistically as the phases are built.
Is there a basement?
There's no basement.
No basement. So what's the depth of excavation? It's probably in there. Just don't have a memory.
Yeah, the depth of excavation, I think it's only five feet.
Five feet? That, that's not possible. Not for a building of that scale.
It's not exceptionally deep, but you know, the existing foundations, the existing cellar, because the existing buildings do have basements will be removed fully. So you're going down 10 or 12 feet for the excavation.
Do you know what type of foundation system you put driven?
It's a spread footing. The existing buildings are on piles, but that's not proposed for the new build.
And maybe you know better than I, but if it relied on piles before, why the expectation that spread footings would work now?
Well, not the geotechnical engineer or the structural engineer, but the, the, the evaluation and the, and the, I guess the distribution of weight, they think can handle with spread footing.
I guess I'm coming at it from a sideways angle of thinking about maybe doing underground additional parking akin to what planning two is proposing.
Yeah, I'm, there's a
I was going to say, if you're already at a depth, that would make sense, but maybe you can add it in.
Yeah. Well, so I mean, part of it is that that would require additional excavation, additional depth on the larger site. And again, ramping down and ramping back up on a site of this size takes away a lot of the efficiency. So there's additional costs, the efficiency loss. And I think that's one of the reasons it was ruled out early on because it was studied to put a low grade parking.
I just, just to reiterate to the planning commission, ZBA evaluated parking for this and they provided the variance for parking.
Technically.
They did, I'm sorry, they did not, but they, they, they did say that they, they, they had no issues with it.
So just, just to, I don't want to say anymore, but just the size of the first building. So much larger than what we were proposing before, without enough real explanation as to why it's really necessary and then how that affects the rest of it. I guess that, that's
Yeah. I mean, I think the owner can probably speak better to the financing reason, like the, the five story building was the original intention. And financially it was not working out. It was not it's not meeting the requirements they needed for, to go forward. But secondarily, I think the benefit of the larger building on to move on to phase two and phase three, because this building will accommodate the tenants of the other two buildings on the western sites.
How many stories are the addition, the existing buildings?
Nine.
In the building.
And the height comparison. So and the height comparison of those nine versus seven. Yeah, we're proposing to lower the building.
Yeah. If you actually, if you go to the section that shows the whole River Street cross section. I think we dashed in the existing building. No, the one that's like our building with the cross section of the street. Yeah, towards the end of the, yeah, this one. The blue line there, you can see is actually the location and height of the existing building. Approximately, it's not, it's not perfectly accurate, but we did this analysis of the existing building. But it is, although it's nine stories, it's only marginally taller because there are shorter stories in the original building.
That, that's all I have for now. Do you have any more? Because then we can let
Nothing that probably won't be, yeah, come up in some other form.
Okay. So then I'd like to open it for public. Oh, sorry. I'm so sorry.
Okay. So my name is Peter Grace. I'm with Penrose, the owner of the project, along with TJ, where we have Tom joining us. So the question about the, the units, so right now on site, there are 143 units. The HUD requirement for when we're building the new building is that we need to replace those units one for one. And this building would effectively accomplish that, given the financing program that we're going with. So that's why we're going from the five story building to the seven story building to provide that one for one replacement.
The 143 units are in the same building being demolished?
Uh, no. So there's two buildings on site that are being demolished. And then we're replacing with the one that will have the replacement units.
There's, there's four tailor buildings. I believe two are vacant that are on this site. They're going to be demolished. The other two are occupied. Everyone's going to move into the new building and then the western buildings.
I guess what I'm asking is, does the one building need all the?
Yeah. So the, the new one building would meet all of the replacement units for the existing building on site.
So it's almost a phasing requirement for, for this project to work.
Well, again, the applicant described at the previous meeting, the, the impetus for the, the, this redesign was that the original financing method for the five story maybe ish unit building. Um, I guess fell through or they weren't able to get that funding. So they're going through another funding mechanism that requires a one for one replacement.
Does that give you a better answer? Okay. Thank you for that. All right. So I'd like to open it for public comment. If you can. Start the lady in front. And again, just if you could state your name and address for the record.
Sandra Rouse. I live at 159 First Street and I consider that I live in the neighborhood of Taylor Apartments. I've spoken before and I feel very positive about this project, particularly the way at which they've come from 2019 and incorporated public input about their concept. And I appreciated that very much. At the time it was a five story concept. So I was quite surprised to hear about the seven story and looking at the previous diagram. Comparing the nine story current tower to the seven story proposed tower really doesn't look like very much of a difference to me. I have three concerns and two requests. The first concern is I, I am, I am concerned about this relatively quick change from a five story to a seven story structure. I understand and I respect the developers' needs for financial considerations. But as a layperson and an engaged citizen, I don't understand all of the details and I would appreciate learning a little bit more about that. My understanding was that the current zoning structure allows for 60 units per acre. And now they're almost, they're, they're more than doubling that density. And I don't understand why this is allowed or why zoning allowed this. My second concern is, what, what is the rush of providing, you know, units available to all the current renters in Taylor in this one seven story structure? When I recall is the proposal in 2019 that was presented to us was for a two phase project. And my understanding was they would be at least one five story structure, but I don't know what the second one was. And my understanding was the first phase would, would house a great percentage of the people in the current tower. I think that's building three or four. And that the, the residual left over could then move into these of the project. Why did that all of a sudden change? It seemed pretty reasonable to me. Number three, the parking variance apparently was allowed by zoning, I guess. One of my considerations that I haven't heard talked about is Sage traffic. And they have considerable parking lots that are typically full. And there is a period of time when the students come and go and that traffic flow has an impact on the neighborhood. If we add to that additional traffic and parking from Taylor with this increased density, I think that's a consideration that should be made by the planning commission and particularly the city engineer should look at that if they haven't already. This is just an observation that I have. Now, right now, the parking lots at Sage are not particularly full. But I believe that might be because of COVID. So I would like to feel the, the travel in my neighborhood, whether it be Sage or Taylor or all of us that live there, there's an overview of what's going on and what will happen once we increase the density of the Taylor Apartments. So I have two requests. One is I would like to invite the developers and Troy Housing Authority and anyone on planning to walk with me on First Street between Congress and Adams and look at the south side of this development. This development tends to look just at downtown, which is a part of the view. I understand that. But as a resident of South Central Troy and only two blocks away from Troy, from Taylor Housing, I feel that this development is on a borderline. And there must be some consideration for the profile that is just south of this development, which is basically three story buildings. And that includes the Sage campus. By the time you get to Adams Street, you will see a five story structure, which is the most prominent building, profile building in our neighborhood, and that's to River Street. It's five stories, traditional brick, arched windows, and it fits in the neighborhood. I believe that going from a nine story tower to a seven story tower makes very little difference in terms of the fortress like tower that Taylor is now. And it isn't something that anybody should want to emulate. And I don't think the five story structure did that. I thought it was quite successful. So my second request is that we delay a decision on the project until there is adequate public information session. They did an excellent job in 2019. But right now I feel very confused about what is happening, why the decisions were made. And when you talk about River Street, you know, and this wonderful intersection that's going to be created, I really think that as neighbors, we need to see how all of this fits together. Thank you very much.
Thank you, by all means.
My name is Carla Guerrero. I live at 64 Washington Street. I've been there for 12 years. I own a home. And my concerns, I, I feel that I want to go on record to say this. My concerns are very much the same as Sandra's concerns. So I'm not going to repeat all of those things, but I just want it known that I, I have all the same questions, thoughts, concerns about the style, the closeness to the street, the size, and particularly about the density. The density having now been from the first approval to now doubled, more than doubled, and about the, and about the parking. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wish?
Long night. I'm Russ Brooks. I live at 37 First Street and I also own 155 River Street, which has been in some of his slides on the presentation. And I'm also concerned about, also concerned about the seven story and the massing of the new proposed structure. And I also am not sure of how we got there from what was the 2019, 2020 presentation, which was referred to as a five story, but a good portion of it was only four. So I, I'd like to address something in one of the slides that was up there that showed, Dash, if you could bring up the one that showed the seven stories and 155 alongside and the other buildings on River Street. That same one, back a few more, forward to the beginning, right? On 155, which is in the middle on the top, the tall part is just an old like water tower. It is not, it doesn't really impact the massing of that building. It's just a small area on top. The building further north, those buildings are not that tall, as shown in this picture. They're a story shorter. Oh, that's 621 River, excuse me. The rest, so if you were to continue up River Street, the next buildings, all the rest of the buildings running north on River Street are a story shorter than 155 River Street. So if you were to put those there, you'd understand the increase in height and mass from all the way up by the State Street parking garage. It grows one story when it hits 155. That just really doesn't represent what's happening on the street there very well. If you were to show River Street there, you'd understand the massing better. But I understand what's driving because of the financing. And, but I'm confused as to the number of units. In 2019 and 20, with all of the meetings, we were told that the number of units that had to be replaced were 125 units. And now it's 143. Why did it grow to 143? And if it is, if it can, if it's only 125, then the 2019 proposal had 90 units. But the fifth floor, it was not all built out as fifth floor. Most of that was four story. If you built out that, if you built out that fourth, built the whole building to five stories, you'd have 102. So if this is being driven by, what would it be? Is it? Was it the HFA component?
9% to a Rad Section 18 blend. Okay. That's what I'm trying to understand.
Yeah.
What's driving 125 to 140? You're taking a project, a large project, multiple pages, need all required.
Sure.
Let, let's hear some of, some of the answers.
Yep.
So if I can answer your question. In January of this year, we applied for a 9% lower income housing tax credit funding to demolish Taylor 1 and 2.
Stay right up on the mic, please.
That would accommodate the needs of the residents in Taylor 4 and then build a new building to accommodate the needs of the residents in Taylor 3. We were going to decommission 143 units, take them offline, eliminate that amount of affordable housing to the Troy community. It's not successful, but just after we submitted that application, HUD came out with a new program called a Rad Section 18 Blend. That's available to housing authorities with a limited number of public housing units. And we met the definition of the housing authority that could qualify for that. Within that program, we would convert Taylor 3 and 4 or Taylor 1 and 2 to Rad, Rental Assistance Demonstration, demolish and rebuild the building, enhance the rents provided into that project, or we would have to replace the units that exist within Taylor 1 and 2 in order to do that, the 143 units. Just the occupied, yes. So that's why we went to the 143, actually 141, because they do allow for small to minimalist reduction. And that is going to accommodate all the residents in 3 and 4. And then the buildings on the other side of the property will be built primarily with market rate, but also with affordable housing next to creating more affordable for persons, limited means who need affordable housing in our community. Okay.
Russ, if you could direct your comments to.
Yeah. I said, I have issues with the massing of the seven stories and would like to know if there's any way to work around that and go back to the five story and figure out if there's some other way to make that happen. That's my concern. So I think this is again, a sudden change and not as desirable as what, you know, was worked on for the last year and a half. Thank you.
Thank you.
Two hands up on Zoom whenever you're ready.
Okay.
Hello again. Barb Nelson and I work at 210 River Street. We own the building there, which is two blocks away. I, all of the concerns that have been expressed here about the density, about the switch from five to seven stories. I understand that this funding source requires one for one replacement of the buildings being demolished. I guess I'd like a little more explanation on why other sites haven't been considered to replace those. You know, there's a lot of land that's owned there and a, and a better view of the whole development. I, I, I miss seeing that whole development on the screen. It was really beautiful to see. So please take those considerations to heart. So for just a minute, I'll be the architect, since we don't have one here, jump in. That rear facade, rear facade, which actually faces all of downtown, that, that east facade, if we could take a look at that. The vast amount of EFS, the lack of detail, there is no break. You know, whether this is five stories or seven stories, that facade needs some architectural love. And it's just a real slap. You know, now that Vessina is built and we can come down Congress Street and see the backside of that building and how no attention was paid to it, all of the, no, the backside, the east side.
Sorry.
Yeah, there. I, it just says penitentiary to me. And I, I, I would think if Sage was awake, they would be here very concerned about that facade. I, I mean, I love the contemporary, believe me, we don't need arches. But something has to be done there, even if it's just with color. And again, whether it's five stories or seven stories, doesn't matter. That, that facade needs a little, I, I, I request a little more attention be paid to that.
Thank you. Okay, if we can move, unless anyone else is here to speak from the public, I'd like to take the Zoom public to speak.
First in line that I'm seeing here on Zoom is Sandy. So feel free to unmute yourself and share your.
Yes, my name is Sandy Dagler. I live at 128 First Street, which is about a block away from this project. I did provide some written comments to the planning commission and I'm not going to repeat them because they're similar to what other people have said. But I just wanted to make one observation. The buildings that were presented to show the context of the neighborhood and how the, the height was in the context of the surrounding buildings, all of those buildings are to the north of the project. The buildings to the south are radically different. They're much smaller in scale, much lower. And I just think that that should be considered when the planning commission makes its decision. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Sandy. And next in line, I see Natalie Jabo. Feel free to unmute yourself and share your comment.
Hello, I'm Natalie Jabo at 249 Second Street in Troy. So South Central neighborhood. And I share much of the same concerns with everyone. I am really surprised, not quite understanding how the whole campus of the Taylor Apartments isn't somehow being holistically considered in order to meet the criteria of providing housing for all the soon to be displaced persons while retaining a scale that is more commensurate with all the neighboring buildings. So yeah, just want to be on record for that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Natalie. And I've been instructed also for the record to disclose that I am related to Natalie Jabo. So full disclosure, full transparency. Thank you. Next in line, I'm seeing Chris Garnett. Go right ahead and unmute yourself. Next, Sue Steele, feel free to unmute yourself.
Thank you. Full disclosure, I, I do chair the Troy Housing Authority. And I wanted to just answer a few of the, the items that were raised tonight. First of all, thank you all for coming and, and voicing your, your feelings about the project. For those of us who believe strongly in affordable housing, this is a really exciting moment for Troy. For almost decades, we've been wanting to demolish Taylor 1 and 2. And the stars have aligned and we have the federal money to do that. And so we're very excited about moving forward on this project. Unfortunately, we are constrained by HUD and the nations financing developmental projects. And as Tom mentioned earlier, we had hoped that we would have the 9% and that would have allowed for the, for the five story. But that didn't happen. And so this is the new plan. And what it actually will do, and from our perspective, and I think from the tenants, it will be a smoother transition for them to all move over together at one time, rather than have it be piecemeal. With respect to the parking, I just want to share that this, the project actually includes more parking spaces than currently exists. Unlike other development downtown, our tenants don't all have cars and certainly don't have two cars per family. So the parking should not be an issue of concern. I'm trying to think of other things that may have arisen. Would encourage you to be understanding and patient. I want to commend Penrose for the work they've done in engaging our tenants. And they presented the seven story, discussed the, the moving and so forth. There was no concern. Those, their concerns were, were addressed and they're excited about the amenities that this is, this project is going to provide. Having washers and dryers in their units, having a fitness room downstairs, being part of the neighborhood again, not being isolated and, and not integrated. And I think if I'm, I, I hope I'm correct, that actually I, I understand the neighbors to the south. But this building actually is part of a high density unit, area of our city. And so it really is not out of compliance. And I commend the architect. And I commend the architects for the design. I think they've done everything possible. So we're looking forward to that. As far as looking at the project holistically, I'm not a developer, I'm not a financial person, but I do know that we kind of have to take these things one step at a time. And I do know with HUD, we have to take it one step at a time. And so we are moving forward, very pleased today to announce that the Housing Board of Commissioners, Housing 30 Board of Commissioners, did approve the RAD Section 18 Blend for Taylor 1 and 2. So we're moving forward. We're very excited, and we're hoping that we can engage the neighborhood with us in this, in this project going forward. And I would really encourage the planning board to amend and move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next hand I'm seeing is from Heidi. No block. Feel free to unmute yourself.
Hi, everyone. My name's Heidi. Can you hear me?
Yes.
So I just want to echo what Sue said. I do think this is a really exciting moment for Troy and a really good chance for us to have a good partner in affordable housing. You know, my comments will keep them brief. I think we're really good at attracting private partners in Troy, and then we're really, really bad at working with them. And so I think sometimes, you know, when the project changes to being seven stories in this case, or in another case, when something changes, you know, we keep asking why. And I think that this developer has given a good reason for why that is. It's a financing concern, it's a HUD concern, and it is, it's just a fact at this point. So I think that keeping the seven stories, it'll help facilitate the transition, that's my understanding. And having it be RAD in Section 18, I think will also really facilitate just a community feel for the project. And so I would just encourage the board to really just consider all of the implications of making it seven stories, which is not just, oh, it's an extra seven stories. It's, you know, that there are more amenities, the washer dryer, there are other things that are positive that come with those seven stories. And I think the major positive thing is that the project will get done if it's seven stories. So thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Next I see is Ronnie has a hand up. Feel free to share your comment.
So I'm here again as an old Trojan who came back. As a Russell Sage College alum and a member of several Russell Sage boards, we've been waiting for decades to get this, the Taylor Apartments down and improve the opportunities for enrollment at Russell Sage. I agree with Heidi in many ways that we have to take it as it comes and do what's good for the whole, working with good developers. I also would like to echo Barb Nelson's concerns about the exteriors and the facing of Troy and the beautification of the buildings. And I encourage the planning commission and the developer to push for attractive development in downtown Troy that will encourage other developers to come and do the same. I've seen, in my opinion, other developments who have turned their back on downtown in, in my opinion, not an attractive way. And I would like to see more sensitivity to this. And thank you very much for all your work. It's late and good night.
Thank you, Ronnie.
Hi, Elizabeth Rodriguez again, Troy resident. I am another board member from the THA. I wasn't going to speak tonight, but since our board chair spoke, I would say my piece because I was the one who didn't vote for this project today when it got approved. And I echo the sentiments of the public that has spoken. And I think our tenants deserve better than what is being offered right now. This doesn't feel like an improvement to me over what is there right now. And I don't think they've taken the time to explore other options to get those 60 units somewhere else. Yes, we have to replace one-for-one. Why does it all have to be on this site? They haven't explored the other options. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'll turn to my fellow commissioners, just as a temperature gauge. I'm assuming that either they would be prepared to make a motion or make a decision, I should say, about, about Seeker. Either way.
I'm glad that we've had very robust discussion. I think it's really excellent. And I think there's a lot of disappointment that we're talking about a seven-story building in 2011, 2021. But the point is that nobody is against this. You all want to get it done, and it is just necessary. So and literally, nobody is really just saying, oh, don't do it. So I'm going to suggest that we go ahead with the Seeker with the negative deck and that we ask that the, that there be a little more time for some more discussion with the neighborhood people and all. So my suggestion is that we do the Seeker, we get that done on this project, the seven stories, and then table it to a date specific or even a special meeting, if it had to be sooner than the next meeting, but to give a little more time. There still is, there's a lot of feeling that, yes, they want, they need the one-to-one replacement, but you're putting it all in one building when there's other buildings coming right behind, there is site control, there is, you know, this is going to go forward. But we do not want to be holding this up. We don't, there's nobody that says, let's not do this. So I'm proposing that I, just again, at this point, we're just taking the temperature here. But my thought is that we go forward with the Seeker.
Is there anything that the applicant would like to present on something timeline or scheduled for consideration?
Part of it is the income derived from the additional rents from the 141 units that creates the opportunity to secure the debt to make the building happen. Fewer units means less income, means less debt, means less opportunity to create the project.
So what you're saying is it isn't just the replacement of the one-to-one, but pushing it back to another, some of it back to the second building reduces the economies of scale
Yes.
to the point that it does not work.
My concern is that we forget all about the people who actually live in Taylor 1 and, not Taylor 1, the other Taylor buildings that are going to be moved. And we're kind of, I'm worried that we're not considering them or their needs in terms of the rest of the project. And I want, I would like, you know, us to realize that these are people who have lived in this neighborhood and people with needs and relationships with the neighborhood, and we can't move them around like chess pieces. And I think we need to get this project moving in some way.
Suzanne, is there more than a move that we're talking about? I really only know it to be moving people out of one building into this.
Yeah, as if it goes through as planned, as I understand it. But if we're talking about waiting and then maybe putting some of them in another building or building a smaller building and dispersing people, I, you know, I have problems with that.
That was actually one of the comments they made was the simplicity of the move and why seven stories made sense for them was so that they could move everyone together all at once.
Yeah.
Right. Okay.
So do you want to do a?
The seeker?
The seeker?
You can make a motion.
You want me to?
Yes.
It would be a motion to amend the prior secret negative declaration to include analysis of the elements of the amended application and determine that the project as amended will not result in any potential adverse environmental impact.
Sounds good.
So moved.
I second.
Moving to a vote.
Is there any other discussion?
We're at the vote.
Yes.
Barb, Suzanne, Roddy Yagan, yes? Okay, motion case. So then that
would be site plan approval. That's correct. Site plan approval would remain, and it sounds like the commission is not yet ready to take that up this evening. To table it until either more commissioners are present.
And also, we are expecting that there will be more conversations just with neighbors, which they've all offered and the housing authority has offered.
Before we make the motion to table, I do want to offer some actionable suggestions, maybe a phasing plan overall to see how all the, you know, apparently there was previously an overall site plan view that showed where things are moving. I see it in the 3D, but it sounds like people are looking for more of a understanding of where the movement happens. I'd like to see in the east elevation facade, maybe some, break it up, look into it, see what makes sense to you. I'm not the architect. I don't have greater ability to give you direction there, but I do agree that that east elevation is pretty monolithic looking. So finding a way to break it up would be welcomed. Those are, those are a couple actionable things, I think. Otherwise, I will make the motion that we table this until the December 15th meeting.
Could I, before, could I add to that motion, table until December 15th, unless otherwise noticed?
Sure. Table, yes, table until the 15th unless otherwise noticed.
Second.
Okay, we'll move to a vote, Bob.
Yes.
Suzanne?
Yes.
Roddy Yagan, aye. Yes, I don't know why I said aye.
Thanks, everyone.
All right, thank you. Thank you. So do we have?